Welcome everyone. We moved into public session at 5:30 to immediately enter into executive session. Executive session just adjourned, so we are back in open session. Is there any individuals who would like to come and speak during our public comment? The opportunity to come speak? Seeing none? Would everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chris, if you can read this. Division of mission, please.
School community, Bourne School Community Vision, we are committed, excuse me, we are committed to fostering a community where each and every student of Bourne Public Schools, students graduate with the knowledge, habits, and skills to collaborate effectively as our diverse society evolves. The town of Bourne continually empowers students and staff to achieve personal goals and demonstrate lifelong learning. And the mission of the Bourne Public Schools is, the Bourne Public Schools is committed to connecting individuals to their growth potential, engaging the community in ways to facilitate student achievement, guaranteeing a relevant, viable curriculum for students, and assuring universal accountability that supports the maximum academic potential and civic success for all students.
Thank you. Are there any individuals in the audience who are using any type of recording devices? Other than cable? And we are not live this evening, some issues with voice, but we appreciate you being here and taping, it'll be played at a later date. Announcements and correspondence?
Yes, I have one announcement. The announcement, I guess it wasn't enough of an experience this fall to say or to change someone's opinion about joining and being appointed to the commission for DAS. We have a principal in our district who has now become a formal member to fill the principal's vacancy on the commission at DAS to review other reviews of schools and offer recommendations and accommodations and accommodations for those schools. So, Principal Amy Settle will be attending a training, intensive training, January 27th and 23rd, and she is now an official member of a DAS commission. So I just wanted to make sure.
Which she has done in DAS, correct?
No, 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 this is actually their commission, this is not a review. This is not going to a school district and being on a review team. She's actually working with DAS because they need to review what review teams write to offer feedback on this.
Fantastic.
Yeah. I think that will benefit us as a public space.
That's great.
That's one announcement I have.
Any other announcements?
Yes, I would like to announce that we are going to be showing Screenagers. It's a documentary, an hour and 10 minutes long. We're going to be showing it on February 2nd in the Bourne High School Auditorium at 6:30. It's open to the public. And it is the, a mother who happens to be a physician started, her daughter needed a new cellphone, so they went shopping for the cellphone, and then, "Why do you need a smartphone?", and things kind of went from that point where the mother started exploring how much screen time kids have, how their habits with phones, iPads, how they're being influenced by that. It spills over into the schools and interesting findings about one-to-one programs that she did some research on. I think there's a lot for all of us to learn because as comes out in the film, our kids are actually watching what we do. And we all, I believe, can benefit from watching this film and learning about how we can make, help our kids and ourselves to really be interactive with people and not just screens. So again, it's going to be February 2nd at 6:30 here in the Bourne High School Auditorium. After we show the film, there will be an opportunity for discussion. I'd like to facilitate a general discussion if people have any comments, concerns, questions. I mean, we won't be able to answer everything probably, but I believe this is a very timely, timely event. And I think that we, I know when I watched it, it was very enlightening, especially to see what happens in the household and how that spills over into the school and actually in all parts of our communities. So, Screenagers on February 2nd.
Is it for all ages?
It's, I believe, I believe middle school, high school, and up would probably be more beneficial for, but I believe that parents and adults will get a lot out of it, not that students wouldn't. Because there's a lot about working together to figure out how you're going to use your devices, you know, when you're going to use your devices, what does that look like? A lot of thought put into using smartphones and using iPads and computer time and all of that kind of thing. So, I would say middle school, high school, definitely grownups.
Common Sense Media dot com recommends great, ages 10 and up.
How are we promoting this, or how is it?
I just actually started, I'm going to be putting it in the newspaper. I'll have a press release on this. This is kind of the press release because they gave me these that I can use. And then it will go out on our e-news from all the, from our building, also probably on the school pages, so that we will be, and then I can make flyers. And this is what I thought I would do. And get it out in the library, take it over to the Jonathan Bourne Library.
And you said you sent it to the paper?
And I will, I haven't done it yet, this was my first big announcement, but yes, I would be sending it to the library.
Well, it's February, right?
Yes, it's February 2nd.
So that's a while.
Yeah. But I wanted to get, you know, get it announced here, I thought this would be a good place to just start the advertising for this event. It would get a lot of people.
And we could hold 840 people in our forum? 842. 842 people in our forum, so we can have quite the crowd.
So if you think we're going to get that, should we do an Eventbrite or something like? I'm sorry, I keep saying, should there be an Eventbrite or something like that? That would, I wouldn't want people to be turned away at the door.
I have a link to-
If there's a sense, have other communities done it?
They, some have, some haven't.
You know, so if there's a sense of that.
They sent me a link to a, something like an Eventbrite, and it's, so far, I haven't gotten a lot of assistance with how that works. So I'm still working on that piece. Because there are some school districts and some entities who actually charge admission, and we're not doing that.
No, yeah, we can, we can chat if that would be helpful. We use them at the Ocean Graphic for our public events. It just helps keep our expectations-
So you know how many people are coming.
So you know, and then people don't come and are disappointed. You don't want anybody leaving.
So maybe I can run by you the link that they gave me, maybe you know something about it?
Yeah, well, I can try. I can try. That's great, yeah.
I also just want to say that our engineering day is happening next Friday, and there's some really neat things happening in all of our schools. And we're very different this year, so, so we're excited about that.
Next Friday.
The 13th.
Oh, 13th, we're connected everywhere.
Yeah, January 13th.
Any other announcements?
Yeah, I'd like to make an announcement. I'd like to make a recognition, I know we've talked, I think I talked to a meeting last time, but about Mr. Weng, Mr. Les Weng is here tonight. He's joined us, he retired us officially last, Friday, this was officially last day, but he's on vacation for quite a while. Doesn't seem like he wants to come back.
Thought that's why he's here.
So we just want to recognize, you know, Les is obviously a long-term, he had 38 years in district, you know, worked in the maintenance department, you know, I agree, misses him already, did a great job, just, you know, his demeanor and his own style and his MacGyver-like skills to fix things. To say, now the motors, he, I know he spliced the wires together with his motors and saved us a lot of money. So he was a great loss, but you know, we're all happy for him, he's enjoying his retirement so far. I think, and I think Mr. Hillberg had a small presentation about it to make too.
Want to come up with us?
Yeah. I was trying to tell you, I got on Facility Sub for six years now, or way longer than us. It was just working with him, he was amazing. MacGyver with a straight demeanor, I mean, he always was very calm, but knew everything about every school, everywhere, so just don't go far. So, we have a small note for you, but I just wanted to say thank you, and this is the schools, and if you look far, you can see Bourne deal. But I will tell you, I, we made a mistake, I made a mistake on the plaque. It says 39 years, there's two solutions. I can get you a new plaque, or you can go back to work for a year.
It was 38 plus. So we'll stretch it to 39. But I just wanted to say thank you. It was more than 38 years.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Les. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
How you doing?
July, it's fast.
Okay, thanks a lot, it was quite 38 years. Really long.
Does he need the bubble wrap? Let's see around now.
That's up to you. That was bubble wrap, it's for me, you just don't have my truck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun. Enjoy. Enjoy. Any other additional announcements? Okay, on to agenda item number two, Audrey, welcome and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Hello, everyone. Hello.
Hello.
So, the Boys' Ice Hockey Team is raising money this week for the families of Owen Higgins and James Lavitt, as we probably all know what happened. They were found athletes that recently passed away, and the team has already raised over $300 for them, so that's pretty great. And rehearsals for Bourne Drama Club's productions of Barry Child and Grease are well underway. It's happening right now. And the winter sports season is also in full swing. And the Boys' Basketball Team is undefeated so far in their conference, which is pretty impressive, and they're playing right now, I think. There's a robotics club competition coming up, and the team will be traveling to Lexington next week to compete. And three Bourne seniors will be traveling to Sharon for the Southeast District Music Festival this weekend, which includes two singers, Abby Seba and Mary Groob's team, and a French horn player, Norris Tru.
Any questions for Audrey? Thank you, Audrey. Enjoy the weekend. All right. Moving on to agenda item number three, transportation contract.
Yeah, I'll introduce that. Yeah, invite Mr. Hilton to come up to the podium while we're in the collaborative. I'll just give a little history of the transportation in districts that a lot of people knew in the committee. We're in the fifth year of a five-year contract for a student. So, there's been a lot of changes in transportation, especially across the Cape in the last number of years, where there's generally been very few bidders on transportation. And a lot of districts are getting very high increases, you know, in that recent biz, last couple of years, like 20, 30 percent increases, you know, from what they're. So we were concerned about that. We had a lot of meetings at the collaborative, the business managers all get together. Probably the last year and a half, two years, it was a group, we've been talking about options of what we could do. And one thing we looked at, and we talked about, the collaborative does transportation for Mashpee Public Schools, a regular transportation, you know, daily basis. So we thought of maybe they could do things for Bourne. So, we had a lot of discussion with them. We also wanted to go out the bid to see what was out there. So we simultaneously, as we were talking to collaborative about options with them, we don't bid with the collaborative because we're part of the collaborative, and bidding process required.
We are the collaborative.
We are the collaborative.
I'm trying to work with you on that.
We are the collaborative, so there's no bidding requirement with the collaborative. So what we did, we did go out the bid, and we had a bid opening a few weeks ago. So I gave you a comparison of where we would be if we went with additional. We had two bidders, the first student, our current vendor bid, and Cape Destinations is a known, you know, commodity on the Cape, they also bid. They were the low bidder, were the two bids we did receive. So we did, you know, consider those, but we're working with the collaborative. So the collaborative functions a little bit is different because we are part of the collaborative, are the collaborative. So in this case, if we commit with the collaborative-
A little more practice.
Yeah. In this case, what the structure of the deal would be, is they, well, they already went out the bid, they've already done some bidding, you know, on the buses. So with the collaborative, we would be getting, you know, 23 brand-new buses, you know, we would be starting with brand-new buses, where on the bid, we would be getting, we only required like the year 2012, a new bus, we would require buses, or the rates would have been a lot higher from a third party. And also, we're committing, the district's committing through this to buy the buses, you know, pay the lease, they leased the buses over a seven-year period. And we're, you know, the district's committing to that seven-year lease. So if any, anytime we wanted to leave the collaborative on transportation, we would still have to pay for the buses, that's what we want to be clear on that. So, other things, it was pretty much run, we've met with Mashpee, you know, their experience, they're very positive, their experience with the collaborative. It's pretty much run as our own little entity, you know, pretty much an Excel spreadsheet where all the costs are allocated, you know, for the drivers, obviously the driver salaries, benefit costs, overhead costs for their, you know, their dispatchers, maintenance allowances to put on. So we pretty much run actual fuel costs, we estimate fuel costs, we'll pay the actual fuel costs. So that's pretty much how it, you know, would be run, just the way we go. So it's more of a partnership, it's a little different than how we do now with a outside vendor. Other concerns. So if you look at the spread, I did put an analysis in there to compare where we are this year, the life-saving contract, where Cape Destinations came in with their bid, and where we estimate the collaborative to be. Collaborative numbers are estimated because we're not going to have the firm numbers until they purchase the buses and then they lease the buses, which will probably be a few months from now. So we estimate and conserve estimates on the, on the cost. So if you look at that spreadsheet, I-
On the file?
In the file, it would say-
What's the title of it?
It say, "Transportation and Cost Analysis."
That's what the team bus did.
FY17. FY17.
Just fast on.
FY17.
No, no.
Okay, just in case. So our current contract, so I did the analysis based on our traditional service we get. We have, we have nine buses that are on a three-tier system, we have nine buses that run on a two-tier system. Plus, we also have late buses for the middle school, you know, 90 days a year. Plus, we have transportation for our field trips and for athletic trips. So we have those costs. So I did the comparison, you know, apples to apples in all these different years. So for this current year, it's going to be, total cost should be about $1,650,000 for FY17 with our current vendor. Cape Destinations, based on their bid, our cost for FY18 would be $1.328 million. An increase of about 25 percent from where we are now. And then, the collaborative, the estimate would be a cost of like 1 million, about 1.2 million. Cost, an increase of about 12 percent from where we are now, where we are this year. Which is actually, I think, is very good compared to what other districts, they've noticed that a 30 percent increase a couple of years ago was said to absorb, you know, and they found, particularly the big increase a couple of years ago. So, other districts are looking at this, I've just been talking to my colleagues. I think we're one of the, we'll be the second, you know, on the Cape, we'll be the second one on the Cape, all right? We do Mashpee and the regular red?
Mashpee, Toronto.
Oh, you do Toronto, I do, okay. So we'll be the fourth one to join, the collaborative do our regular red transportation. So the first year savings projections, you know, so project, be by $133,000, the savings using the collaborative versus we went with the little bit of Cape Destinations. That's what I have, I knew you were, I thought I was speaking.
No, I'm trying to answer questions.
Yeah, I don't know what other questions might have.
Do you, in terms of the bus drivers, I know that there was some talk, they had facilities meeting on budget meeting, one of those, we were talking about the bus drivers sometimes going, you know, from one company to the other company. Do you already have a whole slew of bus drivers, or is that something?
With bus drivers working in the district, the families have relationships with them, the students have relationships. And I've worked closely with First Student and other vendors in this life and other places that I've been. Drivers tend to stay where they're working, and as long as they're treated fairly, they'll go from one place to the next. So, I think often, let's see, 90 and 95 percent of the drivers, as long as they're being treated fairly, going from one place to the next. As the collaborative, you're our stockholders. Our goal is to pass any savings on to you, and then we share any liability. So, we gain the flexibility, and all we're looking for is offering fairness to the employees and making sure that the service is quality. Because you're talking about building a school, as you're talking about some changes in service. We're just changing, and talked about a spreadsheet, we're just changing the spreadsheet. We'll determine what the service is going to be and what the level of service is going to be together, and we'll deploy them based on what the needs of the district are. Because we're not trying to get, we're not trying to pay somebody as a stockholder, we're trying to make sure the savings gets back to you. The nice part is you get on to your six, seven, and eight, you start to see increases aren't just 2 and 3 percent, they start to be 1 and 2 percent, even with some of the factors like the Affordable Care Act and mandatory sick time, which are really driving up the cost of the vendors. People aren't making money hand over fist in transportation. These factors, they haven't accounted for before. The collaborative has, operating as an entity that's an extension of the school districts would have accounted for these over time. And now it's becoming a period where it's work, it's work on behalf of the district, it's work on behalf of the collaborative. But you gain, you gain some savings, you gain some flexibility. You operate as an extension of yourself, the collaborative.
Drivers, we've talked about the drivers, we feel we have a lot of great drivers, you know, in the district now. And hopefully, you know, they will, you know, follow, you know, save the district and, you know, go with the collaborative. At some point, the collaborative will be, you know, advertising, you know, the opportunities probably early now, but some, probably the next couple of months, whatever. So our hope is, you know, the drivers will join the collab, you know, work for the collaborative.
So would their rate of pay stay the same?
It'd be the same, this is prevailing wage. These are prevailing wage jobs, so I don't exactly, I mean, the wages, I, the $21, $22 an hour, I'm not going to be exact, it's in that range, is what they're paying, in that range.
What we've found currently is the collaborative's probably a little bit higher than the drivers in Bourne at this point in time. But there are bits and pieces that fit together easily and don't fit together easily. Collaborative drivers, we don't try to contain their hours, their hours are what their hours are. We co-pay benefits, much the same as a school district, in a percentage. So there are certain benefits that are in addition, and certain commitments that drivers need to make.
What would have to do with the union, will it, or do we do with the union?
I believe it's currently a union in place, but I might not, I'm not a union expert. I mean, the agreement is with First Student, so that's all I, I know there is a union.
Just you know, the districts- We've been through this once already, five years ago, we changed from one vendor to another, and we tried to pull, hang on to as many drivers as we possibly could because Bourne is unique with the two bridges and traffic flow and all of that.
Absolutely.
So I think we're going to have a similar experience, and/or we would have had a similar experience if we went with the lowest bidder too, we would have had to have changed and try to maintain as many bus drivers as possible as well. But the collaborative is us, we are the collaborative, so we are going to maintain as many people as we possibly can in Bourne. Because I agree with Mr. Hilton, that they have such a local connection that they, we want them.
We had a very, I felt that we had a very rocky bus start to the year, this year. Not miscommunication, but just like the scheduling and late arrivals and lots of changing in the- Interstructivity. Yeah. Is there any, you know, is there anything other that you could add to that that might mitigate some of those things?
I would say, the more consistency you have in your drivers, the better off you're going to be. Kindergarten starts are always difficult, just because you're operating with families and students that are new to transportation. The one thing you can guarantee in transportation is there will be bumps, and it's hard to respond to those bumps that happen. There will be buses that are late, there are going to be routes that have to be fixed. But the more people work together, the better off it's going to be. And if we have drivers and staff that work together, I don't see those being a significant challenge as long as we can deploy people correctly.
And we also have a close working-
Yeah, I would recognize-
District, Sue Alma.
Sue Downing. Sue Downing, he's been here like, I think, 16 years. So Sue will still be here, so she is what does the routes, you know, this, I'd say this year-
Contacted Sue a few times.
Yeah, I have contacted, yeah. I mean, this year's better than last year. Last year, you know, from my experience, just like my 10th year doing this, was the worst year I have been in transportation. Last year was horrendous for our student service and drivers, and, you know. This year has been much better, I'm not saying it's been great, but I mean, I think it's much better than last year. We have, you know, like you're saying, consistency of the drivers. You know, if they change drivers, you know, it creates confusion for everybody. It's a different driver three times over in one week, so that's a problem. So we obviously like to have consistency of the drivers, that's the key.
We gave Lawson application.
But that's something that you try to work towards, that's the collaborative, the consistency of the drivers.
That's our goal, but I'll-
At least to retain.
The more people are working together, the better it is. If you have a core group of drivers, often, as I said, 90 percent of the drivers tend to like where they are. It's a struggle, right now, it used to be young moms drove and could drive with their children. What we're finding now is more retired men, which means that you're going to be rotating people over, they may drive for 10 years where they used to drive for 30 years. It's just going to be a different cycle of training people. So we'll always be retraining and working within the community where the right people want to work.
But the moms can still drive with their kids?
Moms can still drive, as long as it's appropriate with the school system and everybody that is working together. If there are things that don't work out, we certainly will address those.
Ed, I have one, I have one just question that I'm wondering, with the seven-year contract and a new school, and I'm pretty sure that we're going to have new start and stop times and reconfiguration, does that have any bearing on the configuration of how we're planning this budget and the amount of buses and the time allotment? And will that come into play at some point with any kind of like-
We could do additional buses, I mean, we're buying the number of buses we have now. So we have, we operate, is how, so the buses, 23 buses. There's 18 buses which we use on a daily basis with routes. We have three spares, and we have two buses that are designated for field trips and sports trips. So that's, we have just, we have 23 buses.
And we might need more buses?
But if we had to get additional buses, we would do that. We'll have, you know, once that decision's made, when the school opens, how are we going to do it? Whether it's going to be still a three-tier, it's going to be a two-tier, all the decisions are-
But it's not going to be that we're going to need less buses and be still waiting?
No, if anything, we're going to need more buses.
I think what continues to get lost here is we are the collaborative. So we control all of it.
I think I wanted to make a point about that too, is that we're operating off a spreadsheet, folks. That means the ultimate in transparency because it is us. And any modifications, any changes, with operating off a spreadsheet, new buses, and Sue Downing, we're good. Really, that's what it comes down to.
To answer your question, if you need two less buses, we sit down, we decide we're going to transfer ownership of two buses to a different district. Then we decided, it drops off the spreadsheet, you don't have that cost anymore. In a contract with somebody that's working as a profit center, they're going to try to figure out how they can eliminate their loss. The benefit is yours, part of the liability is yours, that if we're buying $2 million worth of equipment, if we have to dispose of it, we have to think of it together. That's the biggest issue that we see here.
Does the cost come to the general fund, or does it come to the educational line item?
Out of the operating budget, is that your question?
The $133,000 is, does that go to the general fund of the-
No, I was just showing you savings, no, I was just, I was just looking at the two, the two of them. We would be, all the, we would be invoiced by the collaborative for the actual cost. So that's budget, so we're lining up in the budget for, this year's budget was like 1.1 million for your transportation, so we pay it through the budget. I was just doing analysis of the first year's saves, comparing the costs.
That's projected saves.
Projected, right.
Right, so any savings or any, like in the future, if there is any plus, does that come to the general funds, or does it come to the school line item?
Oh, school.
It would be the school.
School.
Right.
Are you saying returning it back to the general fund of the town, is that the question you're asking?
Is the money going to the town as it comes to the school?
No, they would just bill us, if we have any saves, let's just say, right now, we're, I think we're projecting a $250 a gallon for diesel fuel. If it turns out diesel fuel goes down to $220, there's some savings, we'll get a credit from the collaborative at the end of the year for the fuel credit, correct?
But it's going to be within our operating budget.
All within our budget.
So I can speak to, we have a consulting business manager who's trying to retire, Mr. Marsh and Mr. Duncan will sit with them and try to get us to reduce the factors.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
So it's not $133,000 in savings, it's $150. And that discussion will continue until the day the buses are in and the buses hit the road, and they get the actual value, and then you get a series of invoices. And we'll continue to talk about what savings can be gained, what service provisions we need to change as time goes on. Going back to splitting the service as you build the new school, this allows you to switch in any manner you want to, you can go down to two tiers, up to four tiers, you can do any number of things you choose to do. But the equipment's there, the labor's there, and we're just going to decide how to deploy it to get-
Paul, I have two quick questions before you leave. First off is a clerical question. In looking at the savings, Ed, I see generally routine comparison, comparative analysis. I see extraordinary difference in the field trip athletic cost.
Yeah, I meant to bring that up, actually, it's going to be great, because, yeah, their cost-
Are the students running along the bus?
Going for a tangent on for the rest of your time.
Are those students possibly?
Yeah, it's going to be a great saving, we did talk, I don't want to point that out, because the, 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 the field trip athletic trips, the cost would be about half the way we're paying now, projected to pay. So we can, that's great for the, potentially be more field trips, you know, you can take sponsors, a lot of those. Cost your way down athletics, you can look at that, shifting that, you know, there's going to be some savings at the athletic revolving fund, which funds, the athletic transportation now is sort of revolving funds, so there'll be other funds available for other things and sports too, we have less.
I think, I think to try to answer the question, there's a lot of, because we own the buses, there's a lot of maintenance built into the cost of this, so therefore it blows the cost, because we already own the buses, we're not paying extra for that bus to go on the field trip. We're just paying direct time for the person to drive it. All right?
But, so essentially, you're paying for twenty-three buses by running eighteen, so when you put that bus on the road, you're paying the labor cost and the maintenance together.
The bus to turn it on, right?
Just to turn it on, operate.
Yep, and then deals. So the, the next question that I have is, are, do you guys have, if there's other buses that might serve us better on a routine, on a non-routine basis, like the Niagara stuff, Nature's Classroom or the New York trips or anything, do you guys have access to buses like that as well?
We have spare buses in other places and.
We traditionally don't use our busing company for those type of.
You're talking about coach buses, is that?
We don't have coach buses.
All right, all right. And then my last question then is, if more, more towns go on board, do you foresee a little more buying power, that kind of?
There'll be more buying power and, um.
What savings?
There could potentially be more savings, but it would be a responsibility for the superintendents and the business managers to really work together and work on the operational aspects of this, because.
What savings?
What savings?
Pun, pun is definitely intended, but in the end, the districts are driving the bus.
We've met with Mashpee a couple times, and I know, they've had their experience, I think they, it's like a eighth and ninth year with Mashpee.
This is the eighth.
Eighth year, and I met with Paul Funk down there, he came and met with us a couple times. And they're actually paying the same that they paid eight years ago.
Wow.
You know, because now the, you know, the buses, now you only buy, the lease is up, and they only buy three new buses a year, so your lease expense, your cost of the buses goes down. And they, you know, as far as drivers, we talked about that with Mashpee also, and they've actually, you know, every town's different, they've had pretty good luck with the systems of drivers.
It's been a lot of work to get there.
Right, right, I'm not saying it's been easy.
We appreciate them doing that, getting to this point for us, yes.
And they were true skeptics.
Yeah.
But I think, I think from my perspective, control is a really good thing, to have a lot of control over this, and working together and collaborating with people, and not being, you know, held to a vendor who can make decisions without you being involved in the communication of it, I think that, that's a key to all of this as well. Never mind the cost savings.
So the flexibility and cost savings, huh?
So why didn't Cape Cod Collaborative get, like, start venturing off into providing a little bit of routine?
Eight or nine years ago, twenty years ago, Nataca is in trouble, they asked the collaborative to price it. About fifteen years ago, The Vineyard asked help setting it up, they did it themselves. About ten years ago, Nippero asked the collaborative's help. And eight years ago, Mashpee, it comes from these. People are feeling squeezed by a vendor, the quality of the service isn't what they want. The collaborative operates by advisory groups and by a board of directors. A member of your committee is on the board of directors, superintendent comes and tells me what to do at least once a month, the business managers come every other month or so, curriculum directors come together. Everybody's advising the collaborative on different parts of programs at any point in time. We do transportation, we do gifted talent program, we do special needs programs, we do professional development workshops, anything that needs to be done, we have different groups coming together to help advise. Business managers have been pushing hard on this, as, as Donahue, as Donahue was mentioned. And superintendents, eight years ago, made a strong push towards it. The economy got in the way a little bit, but otherwise, people are back to looking at the savings that they can actualize. But it is going to take some work, and it is going to take some commitment by districts to gain that, gain that flexibility and gain that.
Cool. Any additional questions or information?
Mr. Sheller, please.
Sue, anything additional you'd like to add to?
I, I think your concern about the drivers coming over, I just want to tell you, they offer, they're very compatible to their benefits, and the drivers like being here. This year, we actually have a really good atmosphere and good group of people. We have a couple, but those that don't work out, we don't have to bring back, it's a good opportunity for us. I think what you guys are looking for is not somebody that's going to stay so much for ten years, but maybe finish the year. We really have had a really rough five years, I have to say.
Turnover.
And I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to this being better, because I'm actually going to be able to work with them more directly and have more, you know, control, as Steve's where it is, with, with them, so that we can work, I, I think you realize, the, the more you work together, the better the, the product is, and, and I foresee, you know, foresee that happening. So I, I do know your concerns, I do hear from a number of people, and unfortunately.
I like my bus driver. I've had a seatless driver for a while, I'm married.
Yeah.
You definitely get attached to the bus driver.
You, you parent bus are consistently, over the years, you, you get attached to them, and your children get attached to that bus driver. And it's true, and it's a level of comfort and security for parents and the students, and getting their kids to school safe and.
Especially at the elementary level.
Especially at the elementary level.
They're different, you know, you like the.
Right, and, and we are, besides the new buses, we're also adding another camera, so there'll be like three cameras on the buses, so that the visibility, because as much as we keep trying to be able to watch as much that's going on, the specs have changed, now all the new buses have to have the high seating, so if the students are sitting, visibility is really tough. So every time we take a step forward, you know, it's kind of backwards, but we're adding, you know, more to that to help out, so, you know, they've been great working with us, and again, they're our buses, so we're going to really kind of tweak things, and, and we, even though it's been a rough five years, we have been tweaking a lot of things, working with the schools, trying to get the principals, you know, they've been involved with what, what they would like, and we're trying to implement that. Some might not like a handbook to transfer over, so that we can say that the policies, the, the things that I have requested kind of follow with these drivers, and they know that. So it's, it's been a work in progress, even though it's been really tough, but I, I foresee it looking better, so.
So all of that reactive work that you've had to do, I'll lose yours, is actually going to be really beneficial for, you know, developing the programs with Cape Cod Collaborative, right? You know?
Do you want to say seat belts?
The front seats have seat belts, not the back seats. A lot of discussions about that, is to want the benefit and the liability, is, it becomes a liability to make sure, oh, they're in fine condition every day, the benefit is, that every kid is buckled in, we have to make sure the student's buckled in. So we've talked about the height of the seat, the height of the seat is because they don't have seat belts on buses, if there's any, any collision, that the students are safe, that's the purpose for the high seats.
Besides, also remember a little bit that the majority, normally, a school bus, unless it's on the highway, doesn't go over forty miles an hour. So, you know, it, when you think about seat belts, think about weapons, because, you know, those things, they hurt. Because I, my little buses have seat belts on, on them, when we have them, we use them. It's very difficult to know if a student is seat belted in, or if they're not. You, we have a hard time getting ready to leave the school, can you imagine having to check them, and once you turn your back, you know, you know, you can't drive with them in your car, and it's just you, so, so, you know, there's pluses and minuses to the whole thing.
There's a desire, long-term, they can be installed, but.
No, Brittany's good, that saves a lot of money down there, it doesn't require, but thank you.
They're, they're already, right, the new buses, they have to be able to put the seat belts in if anything ever changes, so you're not going to, you know, come across, you know, in five years, you have to buy new buses.
Maybe we should talk more about the process there, I guess, I have this copy of the, this is where the collaborative, so there's an intermunicipal memorandum and agreement which would have to be voted on and signed, so I can just probably go through that a little bit. So the first part is the term, and so we decided, we're just probably mirror this the same as our, we decided to talk about how the transportation bid, so it will be a three-year, technically, we're committed to buying the buses, that's a separate agreement. So we, we put this through as a three-year agreement with two one-year additional contract terms at our discretion, which is similar to how a transportation bid went out. As I said, it talks about, paragraph two talks about the, you know, increased predictive pricing, that's pretty much working out the spreadsheet, everything's working out the spreadsheet here, two and three, we will be charged actual, you know, actual costs, and then we talk about, paragraph four talks about, you know, what the actual fuel cost is, we have, we have an upsee figure on the spreadsheet, I said. But then the collaborative's responsible for adhering to the, the bid specs, we did, I think I put in the patents too, which, for our bidding went out in November, so they, so as far as our rights respons, their rights responsibilities, insurance requirements and all that, it's the same as the bid, they have to adhere to the, you know, the bid specifications on that. And then this talks about the law, number six, how this is not a requirement that, that we, they, we have to bid with them, because we are the collaborative. There's been some case law, and that's, I don't think that's an issue at all. That's the bulk of it. I think if you do favorably vote on this tonight, I think we're still going to have to, what is, is board going to vote to approve this also, correct?
I will have a board meeting next Wednesday, I'll put this to the board meeting next Wednesday. This is essentially a memorandum of agreement between us and the district, is a fifty-page document, the articles agreement, which is the relationship between the districts throughout the region and the collaborative. That indicates, as, as Mr. Donahue has talked about, how the ownership of particular equipment, of course, that people who are responsible and have. So all these pieces go together, we talked about the attachment of the bid documents and the articles agreement, to just reference, reference those documents, so people understand, as Mr. Lamarche said, you're us, we're you, and we'll do whatever you ask us to do.
We've been involved in the bid, you know, we, we, we were involved with Jim Brown, his retirement district manager, you know, we, Susan and I reviewed the bid, his bid specs, we went over them, we also reviewed the bid results and, you know, voted on, you know, on our, scored the results, so we've been very involved in the process. So once this, hopefully, is all voted, then, then they will go out, you know, and purchase the, you know, commit to getting the buses, and then a few months from now, they have to commit to getting at least the buses, then, then we can more finalize, probably not going to be, for us, the hard numbers, we're probably not, probably in the late spring or something before we have real hard numbers.
We can return and advise on the numbers at any point.
Right. We, we're concerned about our numbers, so we don't expect this to, you know, drastically change from what I have on here.
What's the financing term of the buses?
Seven years, seven years or eight years, there's two options.
So we look like we have a five-year commitment, looks like a four or five-year commitment with, but then an additional financing commitment to three years afterwards?
The way we've operated with Mashpee and other districts is, we'll do the lease term, it is a decision at any point in time, you got to year one, that born wants to do something else, then we sit together and talk, talk about what to do with the buses. They're not asset positive at that point, then we talk about not sharing the, not sharing the benefit, but sharing the liability and making sure we get back what's been put into our plans.
So I would entertain a motion for the intermunicipal memorandum of agreement for fiscal year two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty, regular day transportation between Cape Cod Collaborative and the Bourne Public School District. Is there a second?
A second.
Judy, second. All those in favor?
I am.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Saying none, the eyes have it, unanimous vote.
Can I ask for another motion, probably related to this? So I do have the bid, I did have the bids, and we have the option to reject the bids, which I'm going to have to reject the bids we received. I don't know if we want to make a motion to reject the transportation bids that were received, you know, based on our, you know, request for bid dated November seventh, because I'm going to reject the bids, I'll send a letter to those two bidders, I'm going to reject the bids. So rather, you know, it doesn't hurt to have a motion, but you.
So the motion would be that we.
To reject, to reject the bids from Cape Destin, I think it's actually technically called Jay's Equipment. Jay's Equipment, doing business, you say Cape Destinations, and first student, the bids over-received, we reject their bids. Just want to, if you have a motion now, I'll send them a letter rejecting the bids.
And make a motion to decline or reject if you will, which I would like better, the two, the bids received on November twenty-ninth, Jay's Equipment Corporation.
DBA, DBA, Cape Destinations.
And first.
First.
Motion by Chris, second by Mitch, all those in favor to reject the bid requests as presented? All those opposed? Abstentions? Saying none, the eyes have it, unanimous vote.
All right.
Motion passed, is open?
Yes.
Open. Okay. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Update on the MSBA for the new school, some of the timelines, the next steps, are there any committee vacancies in that process, recommendations?
Committee vacancies are a lot, so I'd like to remember them.
Unfortunately, we weren't able to meet after the favorable vote.
Okay.
We should open meeting law, uh, a question, so we didn't meet, our first meeting is actually tomorrow night.
All right, so we'll table this agenda.
Yeah, I put the agenda in your file, so you can take a look at what the agenda was moving forward. We have had meetings, just to give you an update, we've had, Kent has come to meet before, the vacation, he did meet with some staff members at Peoples Elementary School, and he's meeting with the, the, the team tomorrow morning at nine AM in central office, and we're just starting to cross these and dot i's and things of that nature, as, we talked about, we are going to set up a transition committee within the district, but I wanted to have our first meeting, school building committee meeting after, to kind of determine where the committee wants to go and where we are, and, you know, and congratulate each other and that kind of thing, so.
Okay. Thank you. Facilities update, Mr. Donahue.
Uh, let's see, we have very productive, we only have like a five-day window for the holiday break, I'll be able to let them, as far as.
So Peoples Elementary School, what were some of the?
Over at Peoples, we replaced all the faucets that we had in the first grade hallway, that it had testified for lead, so we replaced, we had a plumber, because they were quite, these are original faucets from nineteen fifty-three, so the plumber had a challenge, a couple days, the plumber to get all them out and get new, you know, new faucets in, so that's, that's, so that has been done. So the goal over there, you know, that building is to retest, we want to put those run a while, and then we'll, we'll retest the water from those devices. There's one other faucet we, I think we missed after, but I think it's classroom fourteen, we'll do that also. There's one other one, faucet in the classroom, it's fourteen, we'll take care of that shortly. That's what's going on over there, trying to.
But middle school?
Middle school, we're still working, a lot of work on the HVAC system, we did, we did have a project of glycol in the, you know, in the, in the system, which is like the entries. We had, had had it in the past, but we had the, we had the, you know, leak last year, all over the gymnasium, so pretty much we're down to nothing. And so some of our pipes, like obviously over the gymnasium, you go outside, we could pull, you know, pull, get glycol in there, which we did do. We bought the glycol, you know, it was like ten thousand dollars or so, you know, we had it. We, this fortunately, this is also capital of the project.
Right.
That's a good thing, it's not affecting the school budget. So that is, that was all added simultaneously. They were insulating, one of the classrooms, science classrooms on the second floor, there were a lot of issues with sound from the, from the HVAC system, just, it has to be a fan over a classroom and to circulate the air within the building, certainly very loud. So we did insulate that, which you've been talking about, so we did insulate that over the, over the vacation. I just checked in with the teacher yesterday, she thought it was improved. To the real test is when she has the kids speak, present in front of the class, if she's in the back of the class, so you can hear them or not. She said, once I do that, I'll really know how it, how it is. But she thought it was better. You know, she's very patient, so we're going to see. We, we, you know, it's just one of those situations, not a good planning or design of building to have this in, in a classroom. So we've done-
Sounds like a jeopardy.
Yes, it's very loud.
Middle school. So potentially, with the addition of the new school, is there some possibility or flexibility of a change a little bit? With removing a grade up in the middle school?
Well, I don't know if that classroom designed, it's a science lab.
Is that where to get the kids to speak up?
Right, right.
Your outdoor voice, use your outdoor voice.
But that's a challenge, so when the kids have to speak is when it's a challenge to hear that. Let's try and think what else there. Over there also, we've had, you know, the four water fountains on the second floor, all tested positive for copper. So that's been an issue we've met with water filter. People came out, a couple came out, they got the plumbing spec there, I talked to the law department. So with, with the course of action was to filters. So we have filtering, we had, you know, we had a plumber come in, we bought some filters and removed a lot of the copper tubing, which, you know, within the wall there, and also put filters on. So now we're going to have to run those, not students, but want to run them ourselves a little bit, and then we're going to, you know, test, test that. Hopefully that works. If that does work, we will do the other two water fountains, you know, have to retest those. If it doesn't work, we're probably going to have to, to bank new devices, whatever else to do. There is, there's, still is some copper in the cooling units in, in the water fountains. So the other option is, it's not cold water, so we probably have to, that's a good option. We're not, um, sure. That was it, so that was all. Then, you know, a lot of, all the schools, you know, a lot of waxing above the floors and stuff, doing these things and heavy cleaning the classrooms, you know, desks and stuff.
It was a sink in the kitchen? Was there a sink that had, uh-
Yeah, there's also two sinks-
Tilt skillet.
Tilt skillet.
Tilt skillet in the kitchen, which they have a flushing program, they do flush that. Also, there were two sinks in the whole home ec room, which we replaced those faucets. The plumbers did that also. So the goal is, once we get these devices run a little bit, you know, we'll retest, and we'll, I think we'll just retest on our own and then we'll, we'll go from there. So hopefully everything will, you know, so we get the results.
Any, any questions? Can we go to facilities? Track?
The track is completed. We do have a meeting, there were some issues, we talked about the timeline, so I have had contact. We actually have a meeting tomorrow afternoon with the track, you know, representative of the track company, you know, Cape and Island, and with the project engineer and myself tomorrow afternoon to discuss, you know, some issues with, you know, the timeline and potential penalties and stuff, so that is, so it should have been updated next meeting, but there is a meeting scheduled tomorrow afternoon, we'll talk about that.
And so you're going to talk about some of the penalties for the-
Right, there are penalties.
I know that last time, I think you had mentioned looking for us for some guidance and how you-
Well, I, what I was trying to do is, I mean, I talked to them, yeah. There is, there is a penalty clause, which, you know, my goal was, because really the penalty was affected by really was the athletic department, because we had a, we had a reschedule, we had to make a game and road game, then we didn't have the concessions, then we had to pass the kids to the game. So there are some actual losses of revenue. So my goal would be to work with the vendor, see, rather than us taking some penalty, you know, deducted from the contract, if they would make some reintegration, you know, to athletic development fund. That's my goal.
Both.
Right, so I don't have any of both, but, because, you know, if we-
I mean, it is monetary, but, I mean, I think there was one football home game.
There's only one, yeah, it was one game.
So, I mean, those, essentially those seniors didn't get their, it's not just about the money, that's their last time, they didn't spend their-
Well, it wasn't the homecoming game, you know, it was one game, you know, it was, we was working with the athletic director, I don't think he was good to move. He was, it was, the game he would have, he was okay with moving, so we moved. Like homecoming was obviously happened, we still had to reschedule like the night soccer field hockey games, they all happened, we had to reschedule them.
Correct.
Yeah, so we did have to make some change. It was an inconvenience, you know, to, you know, the kids and the-
Well, I'm just saying, for those seniors that played their last football games, they missed-
They missed one home game, correct.
They missed one home game?
One home game, totally.
No, they played one home game.
No, they did all the other games. Only one home game was rescheduled. All the other games were held at home. No, we worked around it, no.
Football games?
All football games, only one, only game that was not held at the, that-
Oh, I don't remember it that way.
No, that's, that's, no, that's the way it is. You know, there's only one, it was one game that had, we, we made a road game. All the other home games were, were played as schedules. It was only one road game, it was one home game, we, we made a road, it was go hassid, that we had, and we went to go hassid. Other than that, all the games were held as. We had to reschedule, I said, the, the, the night field hockey and the night soccer game was yours, that was a senior game. We did have those, they were rescheduled, like they were all held. So, you know, it was, it was an inconvenience and some working around and, you know, just trying to work with them, so. We are going to make tomorrow-
Right, there was some revenue lost.
There was some revenue lost, inconvenience and just not having it completed. So, you know, we'll see how the meeting goes tomorrow.
And it was supposed to be finished when?
It was, it was supposed to be finished August thirtieth. But they, they are going to make some arguments that there was changes, that the lady, we did a change, or we, we did the area, so we added some, some area to it, and then we had to build the walls.
And it wasn't properly surveyed the first time to catch the engineering-
Yeah, they had to regrind, you know, so-
Issue.
Like any contractor, they're going to come up with, you know, they're going to try to justify that they weren't really late, but, but they did start late too, which is not a factor. They did start a couple weeks late when they were supposed to start.
They had an unseasonably great summer and fall for rain wise, and so I don't, you know, weather wasn't a factor.
Wasn't really a factor, I mean, I think like any contractor, they just, they overlook and then they have issues delivering everybody, because I think most schools probably have the same contract we had.
Weren't they, though, when they were here, we had that bid it out, weren't they local guys who-
This is Cape and Island.
Really, weren't they like, like born though? Weren't they really wanting to-
They were in Bourne.
Yeah.
Yes, Cape and Island Track, Tennis Track.
So they really wanted this because they're from Bourne and they wanted to do this.
Right. They did it, they did a good job. I mean, timelines and their commitments, other projects and shifting guy, I mean, that's, that's a challenge. I mean, we, you know, we were challenged, you know, we were inconvenienced and delayed. You know, show other districts were the same vote, but I think they finished somebody else after us. We weren't the last to be finished, I don't think they even wanted to after us. But it did get completed, you know, I think it looks good. A few little punch list items, minor things, those are working with-
So they're still things then?
My, very minor, like just where we want it to like, where there's a little gap of a couple inches between where the track and the soil are on the inside, which they should, they should patch, you know, stuff like that. We all, you know, they, they won't be paid full until everything's completed, we, you know, we're not going to make a full payment, we'll hold some retainage until everything's, the punch list is completed, which probably won't be till the spring now, because they can do anything now, planting grass, obviously. So we have a meeting tomorrow, I will report back on that meeting.
Who's going to be in that meeting?
I will be there. I talked, it's three o'clock at the office tomorrow.
I don't know if the school building meeting is there?
Yeah, so I'm sure available, definitely. I don't know if the superintendent's going to be available, maybe myself and Gil, associate, who's the engineer in the project in Cape and Islands, Kristoff available, which is Cape and Islands, he'll be there.
Alright, that concludes the public participation section, on to school committee business. Approval of December minutes. Any other additional edits other than what was sent to choice? Okay, and it's accepted. Capital outlay for fiscal year two thousand eighteen.
Okay, bring that looking back. I remember, I'll give you the update. We did actually present this morning to the capital outlay committee, the superintendent and I, and then we presented five different of my items, I'm just remembering. First line item was technology, which is his line item, he's the tech director. So he can, mostly-
It was, it was basically two items. It was to continue our VoIP, transition to VoIP system for the middle school and for Bourndale Elementary School. As I presented this morning, I know people are going to raise questions about why Bourndale is still a new school, but the phone system that was installed in there was not, is not the best phone system at all. It's actually a couple of layers of, of, I was going to say phonage, but that's not a good word. But, you know, it's, even in, in front of the administrative system, there's two phones, is it internal, is it external? Anytime we need to replace a phone now, because it's such a unique system, we actually have to buy it off of eBay. That's our, that's our resource to buy the phones for that. So, you know, when we, when we're looking at the new Peoples Elementary School, we're obviously not going to do that. We're going to work on this nice system that we're working on. So we're moving towards that direction. So that's a real bulk of the financing that we're requesting for capital outlays, around a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the, to move, continue to move towards a VoIP system and have our own inclusive system. And then the rest, the bulk of the, of the rest of it is to upgrade the student and teacher CPUs at Bourndale Elementary School. As you know, we're preparing to build a new Peoples Elementary School. We want to make sure that we have a very consistent competitive edge between both elementary schools. It'll be nearing ten years old, those devices, so we're looking to upgrade those to similar to what we did at the middle school with the LG Chrome bases for the students. And still some type of CPU with an operating system for the, for the classroom teachers, because the outside world has not all gone Chrome, so we still need access to Microsoft Office and the other software. So that's around, it's two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the technology upgrades for the district.
And what's the timeline on these requests? Is this what you-
This is for town meeting.
You presented today?
This will be approved, will be approved at town meeting, and then the funding will be July first.
Spring town meeting.
Spring town meeting, July first, we have the funding.
And down the road, do you foresee, what are some of the capital projects that-
Well, it's just the first one, if there's more.
Oh, okay.
Oh, from this one, I was, I gave that was the first one.
Sorry.
Alright, the next one we presented was for mini bus. Last year we requested two mini buses for, for where we transport the students in the district, and we cut it back to one, the ones cut it back to one, which we did, so now we're going back for the second mini bus. Actually have to add to our fleet, generally we've got, we've got six mini buses, five we operate and one spare, or, you know-
Flex.
Flex, these were spare.
We have nothing with sparing at all.
Spare.
No sparing at all.
So that, so now we have to go to seven, because it's been a lot of needs this year, because we just received the one we asked for last year, like a month ago, and we usually generally would trade in the old one, or, you know, but we didn't trade in because we really need seven buses right now, because there's a lot of needs for the, mostly, I think for pre-case students that we have to transport. So we're going to, we are going to add to our fleet that have seven. So we have requested another, you know, another bus for this, you know, we'd be ordering for next year. That was, that was the request, sixty-two thousand dollars for a mini bus. And then the next one, which is something else that had deferred last year, was for this building here, mostly here at the high school, new fifty thousand for asbestos abatement, which is really district-wide, but in the bulk of it here at the high school. This will be the fourth phase of a project to eliminate all the asbestos soil tiles on this building. So all it's really left, the main area is, is the A wing, you know, second floor, we got science labs. So this is project would be to remove all that floor tile, put down the floor tile. In other areas, I said I'll have to survey the building again, make sure we've missed anything, but I think we have everything else out of here as far as floor tile goes. There's still asbestos in the building, not many student areas, there's some engineering closets, and some in the tunnels, you know, below, you know, tunnel system in the building. So that, then maybe other, there are other areas we are responsible for asbestos, all the peevils, we'll try to minimize that, but we just didn't abate them recently, so, you know, we have to abate floor tile peevils as well. And also, all this abates are responsible for that in school also. We have done stuff there in the past, but very minimal. We do minimal, you know, just what we have to do. And that was our second, my second question. The third one is a continuation, but it's like a second phase of a project here at the high school, where we had forty thousand dollars a couple years ago to, to repair a lot of the columns, there's thirty-two columns around the building, structural columns here, and a lot of issues with them, the caps coming off, they're cracking from water seepage over the years, and it's like a, they're like stucco, like, if you're looking like white stucco. So we have repaired nine or ten of those from the last funding, and there are some more that have to be repaired. And also, there's some mortar issues, I think it was the end of the, this B wing we found where some of the, the bricks are coming off and the mortar is failing, so we want to address that also as part of that project. So I think the forty will cover what we need to do with the repairing the mortar issues and, you know, repairing the more columns. The other columns that really need to be addressed are like the back of B wing, so that people can go see behind the teacher parking lot, you don't see those columns, but they, they repair. The ones more visible, we already done it in front of the building, and the ones out here in the courtyard, there's some.
The brick is not, it's, it's repointing of it, there's one or two that need to be replaced, but it's not structural.
And it's not structural, it's just, we want to address it, you know, we're just trying to maintain the shell of the building, obviously. But we, this building should last, you know, a lot longer, you know, make it work, not last minute. What else we got here? And the last one, which something's kind of unique, I didn't realize, is the, the playground at Bourndale does not have a fence around it. It's only its fence on one side of the, of the playground at Bourndale. So that's a concern, obviously, the principals who brought this up to me, the superintendent. So we have requested, what, forty thousand dollars to, to fence in the entire, you know, obviously the entire playground, you know, it's not, it's not fenced, the front of the parking lot in two side, you know, one on the side and a rear. So there are issues sometime, obviously, obviously, you know, making kids safe and not being able to wander into the woods. Also, we do have, you know, animals that come out, also hunters and dirt bikes, and so we just want to be able to control that space. So that's the goal, hopefully that will be favorably go through, that'll be next summer with the fence up, make it ready.
Is that a funding update completed in there?
Yeah, they're, Bourndale did run out of fin-
Is that a funding update?
They were, they got to a financial pinch, so it was one of the decisions that I think was on the, on the top of it.
I thought that they didn't even plan for a playground at Bourndale.
That was part of it.
The thing was built and someone was like, where's the playground?
But they did build the playground, yeah.
So that's, those are all the requests, I'm getting requests, that's, that's where we are, we are right now. So they seem to be favorable, I mean, generally, you know, they do, you know, they recommend approval, so hopefully they'll go through.
Do they go in as a, as a, as a-
Yeah, no, they go, any sort of item, I think would, didn't mean, the capital outlay committee, I believe probably presents it to the finance committee to go over them, and then, then they'll make a recommendation at town meeting, this will be an article, capital outlay article, and they will recommend the town meeting to approve the capital projects and generally, you know, to approve them all. And once that's, you know, once their, that's, you know, goes, then we can, then we know that the funding, we can start with the, like on the asbestos, I thought the bid, so I can get the bid back, it was going, I can be ready to go. Once it's approved, I can, you know, get the ball rolling on this, exactly what the bid on. So we know the funding will be there on July first, so.
The message we did receive today, though, was that we really need to focus on, you know, the, the projects that need to be done to maintain maintenance, I think, so we not, not maintenance things that we do on a regular basis. So for example, asbestos, this is the last phase, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar request, if there's things that are future on there, because we now know what we know about this particular facility, we should really put it in our operating budget moving forward. There are a couple of big capital projects that are coming forward for the town, so there is more of a conservative view to those things. So for example, the technology, because we are, it seemed like they were supporting the Bourndale upgrade, but knowing that the peevils, the following year, would come in with a new construction, therefore there should be no technology requests for that type of assistance in the future. So we received a good message today, you know, very supportive, but also, you know, start, you know, shopping your pencil, looking at things, and, you know, if we can avoid another mini bus for one more year, it would be good for the town. So it was a very collaborative, open dialogue conversation today with capital.
Any additional questions for Ed? Okay, thank you.[1618.23] Admin budget priorities.
Okay, the school committee, I know that, the school committee had talked about this, and it was, it was my responsibility to come back after working with the administrative team. We've met on two occasions, our last meeting was actually yesterday morning, excuse me, yesterday afternoon, we have a bunch of priorities again, so I do have a number of items to share with you that are our budget priorities. They are going to be in order, with the exception of our number-one priority, our number-one priority is professional development, and that will be presented by Sue Sisman. So I'm gonna go in the, I'm gonna go in the, present the other items. Our second priority to us is that, is the bridge program that we talked about, that's a program for students that have medical conditions at the secondary level, which is middle and high school, students that may be, have, suffer from concussions and are transitioning backs, students that may also have other medical conditions, and this is any student, it's not a specific targeted student, this could be, you know, a student in athletics, this could be an AP student, this could be, you know, any student that's involved in this, to set up a therapeutic program with a social working component to it, therapeutic component to it, as well as an academic component to it, the transition students back in to our school system. We've had a number of instances, I think the middle school is somewhere around a half dozen concussions this school year, it just, concussion is really a big thing right now, and it's, I think everyone, rightfully so, is very cautious about that. It isn't shake it off and get back to school. So we would be one of the first on the cake to actually establish this program. We've been going to some professional development, we actually have somebody coming to our district January eleventh, I think, I think the eleventh, somebody's coming to present to a number of us, including guidance counselors, both the bridge programs, so that's really our second priority. There'll be more information forthcoming, I'm just giving you kind of the thirty thousand foot presentation of this. Next is, we really need to rework our supply lines. As you know, I do a perpetual expenditure for supply lines, we administratively work on that. We need to add another category, and that's really around sciences, it's around the labs. We're doing more around labs, it seems to be taking more money away from other teaching supplies within, across disciplines, so we really need to try to work and establish a, a new subcategory within our expenditures. So that's gonna be around sciences and lab resources of that nature. As we've developed more labs, like the aquaponics lab here at the high school, the robotics lab, you know, there, there are more resources, they tend to be a little bit more expensive, and we don't want to take away from all departments just to support one department, so we want to balance that out a little bit more. Talking about resources, again, we're looking at elementary guided reading books, we need to stop building that, you know, that collection again, we need to update that collection. I'm sure that curriculum sub and Sue Sisman and Ellen will be able to talk more about that. So that's a priority for us, so these are in order. The next one, which is a priority for us, is every year, we continue to redo, we continue to see the reduction of title and funding within our district, but it's a valuable resource for us and for our students, so we have to find a way to move some of that and put it within our operating budget to continue to support that program. So that's a priority for us as well. And then we have, looking to have some full-time summer support for the administrative assistant at the elementary level, we're looking for some summer support as our schools become more community-oriented, town-oriented resources. We've done a lot with decentralizing, a lot of services and support for families and parents, we tend to push people back to their, their schools, because we want to have that relationship built, but we need some support during the summer, some communication, some availability, some support at the school level. And then the last one is always about adding some more support for our grounds, you know, looking to, to try to maintain what we have for our, for our grounds. And so those are, that's really a, you know, it was a very lengthy discussion, I'll give you the short version of it, it'll be obviously very in-depth when we talk about this at the budget presentation, but that's, those are really the priorities, and now it's our job to try to figure out how to do this with all of our contractual increases, without, you know, ballooning the budget, and, and, you know, being, you know, stewards of the, of the town's money, you know, we're not looking to, you know, add substantially to this budget, we're looking to, to be a team player in the budget process. So we're gonna have to, you know, see what priorities we can put in, and which priorities we may need to weigh. One that we've already pushed off for maybe at least one more year is looking at expanding our sciences at the Bourne High School level, looking at adding CAD back into our sciences. We do a wonderful job of giving our middle school students experience with coding, with digital literacy, and coming to Bourne High School, it just, it's not that it's not completely there, but it's not really programmatically there, so we have to start taking a look at that. So, you know, if we can squeeze it in this year, fine, but we're more comfortable with moving that to a two-year cycle, also knowing that within two years, we'd be looking at the Upeas Elementary School, which we have its own innovation studio, and some restaffing would be involved with that. So, you know, we're kind of still processing all this information moving forward, but that's really our, in a nutshell, a priority.
And do you want to just briefly talk about how this process comes into being, and these priorities come into being, with, you know, the process you take with it? I mean, we, we've been, several of us have been through the process before, but...
We really, we really hear it from the ground up, so we listen to what our staff needs, with, you know, you know, for example, the, the science supplies, we need more science supplies, you know, that's where it's coming from, the requests are coming from there, this isn't, you know, just Sue and I, Ned sitting at a table saying, you know, let's throw the doubt at this. So we really hear the needs, and we take those needs seriously, we take the feedback seriously, the bridge program, we hear a need for that, you know, teachers are incredible, incredibly supportive of their students, but, you know, they struggle with the student who maybe is only a partial day, how much work do I get, how do I grade them, all of that, so we need, that's where the bridge program comes in. You know, how do we address those, so we can have the teacher really work on their instructional, what their, their day-to-day operation is, day-to-day work. It's not that they don't support the student, it's just they need that support and that resource. So we really take all the feedback we receive from everybody, it's that, you know, the guided reading books at the elementary level, we've heard over and over again now, we need to add, and MRT is working on, you know, the MRT for writing and reading, we're looking at that. I mean, that's a resource, but we're gonna look to see if we can try to make that work out this year, whatever resources may be available for that. But, you know, again, we hear it from the ground up, we capture it, we organize it, and then we try to do the best we can with what we have, and prioritize it as administrative team. I wish we could give everybody everything that they want, but we can't do that, but it all generates from people expressing needs, and which is the number-one priority we have, which is professional development, which is what Susan Sisman was, would speak about, so I don't know if that was helpful yesterday.
It is. One of the things that, I don't know, first, joining on to the school committee, some of the feedback was from some of the teachers, actually, the number of the teachers, as I said, you know, we don't know when that, when and how, we don't know what the process is for, and the timing for making requests. And, you know, everybody's not assertive, and everybody's not always in the right place at the right time. And so, you know, theoretically, I'm trying to swing back and, you know, talk to, you know, talk to some of those people to see, okay, so what are you thinking at this point? You know, has the process improved? And one of the things that I though appreciated is that it's a, if, you know, three hundred and sixty-five, you know, and it's always, it's an ongoing conversation. One of the things that I'm still hearing is that there are teachers who have some requests and, and don't really know what the, the timing of process is, like, if they want to put forward some ideas, what, you know, what is, what is that structure, you know, about, how can they go about doing that, before it's too late, and, you know, the word back to them is, okay, it's too late, this budget's already set. So have, what type of systems are...
First of all, I'm not sure that we've ever said, it's too late. I'm not sure we've ever said, we don't...
Well, probably if it's already in a current year.
We can't meet individual needs, we can't meet an individual person's needs. And just like you said, we talked about this before, it's a three-sixty-five process, it's not a date certain event, we don't say on December twelfth, have your budget request in, and we're done, because December thirteenth, you can have an emerging need. And then what have you done, you've committed yourself to December twelfth. So we don't, it's not a date certain event for, it's really not an event, so these are all emerging things over time, and they're really connected through, through like a consent, a building consensus, it's not, you know, you hear enough from this person, from that person, you evaluate it, you're part of it, you're observing it, you're, it's that three-sixty-five process. So I think what's happened in the past is people were, and I was part of it here when I was here between two thousand and two thousand and four, is you gave your list, and you expected to give your list, and that was, that was, that's not, we had not, never created a budget that way, we created based off of emerging needs, and our budgets are so ultra-focused on kids, and, and the needs for kids, and teachers, supporting teachers so that they can meet the needs of the kids, and that's what it's on, but, you know, their, their resource, their direct contact is their principal, that's the person who runs the building. So the principal's constantly asking, and I know people, I've talked to principals, I know people constantly ask them, you know what, I'd like this, I want this, can I get this, can I get that? And a principal has to be the one who mitigates, manages, you know, stays, you know, you know, budget-wise in the whole process and all that. And again, there were, won't be unhappy people, we know that.
Right.
But how it prioritizes is based off of emerging needs over three hundred and sixty-five days, if not six hundred days, seven hundred days, a thousand days, you know, based off, it's really, you know, student-generated, so there is no dates, maybe we should do a better job really articulating, what if we're saying the three-sixty-five?
I think so, I mean, I think that, you know, there's something, I've seen that it, I mean, I believe in the, in emerging needs, and, and support that type of budget, but it seems like some of that message isn't necessarily trickling down into some of the teachers still. We are respectable teachers, and, you know, and so I think, you know, there, there has been progress, but I think that it seems like there, like, more communication about reminding people that, okay, you know, as you're, you're coming across things that you think are needs, you need to, this is what the process is, you need to make sure that you meet with the principal, and that there's some type of, you know, you know, that you've written it down, it's not just a passing conversation. I mean, I, I think that that sounds like it, it common sense, but I can't tell you how many people say things to me in passing, and I'm like, okay, gotta write that down, I need my memory thing, you know, or it's like, can you send that to me? And I, and I think that that's where, you know, some of the things are kind of fallen by the wayside, and so people, there's some people who still feel like, okay, I'm not being heard, and so I think that, that a little bit more formality working on that might be helpful, beneficial, because I think, you know, I've been on the budget committee and thoroughly appreciate the ongoing nature and the prioritization they've taken.
Yeah, and then the, the last item for that is, we really have not had a lot of money to budget.
Right, right, exactly, exactly.
We've had some pretty tight budgets.
And I think that that mentality of, you know, I think Mitch brought it up, Les, he was like, no, I don't like this budget, it's not enough money, you know, we're not, I'm, I'm gonna vote against this, because it's not enough money, there are still some serious needs that, that need to be met. So I think people still should be able to feel encouraged to say, and I think that's where kind of the mentality of, well, it's too late, you know, you know, we can't, we can't ask for more money. And it's like, okay, but what are your needs, so that we make sure that we're looking at the priorities of those needs.
Right, and then the last piece of that is, we also do what, exactly what Mr. Donnie did, we do comparative shopping too, so we try to capture savings, and if somebody has a need, we try to support that need. It may not happen on day one, it may not happen the day you ask for it, it may not happen a month later, but maybe near the end of the year, we can, or, you know, middle of the year, we've saved somewhere our transportation, and we can go ahead and go game buses and get this, you know, this probably off the priority list, and we really try to work with principals on that. So I think some form of communication around it would be helpful.
Yeah, and maybe, even, maybe it's even just at the principal level, communicating with the, with the fact that, that just seems, it, it seems like, okay, a little bit more of a push on that, and really with the expectation that everything doesn't get approved, I mean, you know, let's not be unreal, isn't it?
Professional development, it's a huge need in the district, because we've got many, we've got a lot of learning going on, but not just for kids, we have a lot of learning going on with the teachers and all of us as well. So one of the things that struck me when you were talking is that I think that through the resource teams, that there has been gaining some understanding of how, how, not particularly the budget process, but what it takes to really thoroughly vet something, and then make a recommendation for a pretty high expenditure of money, and that happened with the math resource team. So we are going to have some recommendations, hopefully, this year, from the literacy, which is now the reading and writing. I don't have them yet, but we will have those, guided reading will be part of that, because we know that we need to revisit what we've got in those closets, especially at, at the elementary level. But the professional development and how to conduct guiding reading groups is going to need to be, we need to do that again. And I know that there are some, a couple of our, our elementary coaches are actually doing a, a professional development workshop, three sessions after school, but we want some consistency, coherency, and so we'd like to make sure that all of our elementary teachers know how to set up guided reading groups and, and structure that. So that will probably be a recommendation that comes out of the MRT, but because we are going to revamp our library, they're gonna need the training on how, on how to do that well. Also, along with that comes writing, not that there's a writing process, we're going to have to revisit that, and depending on what kind of, what we do from MRT, whether we're going to use a curriculum approach, which would be a reading, writing, and something that you, similar to the Eureka Math, that would require some professional development, but if we don't do that, and we say, well, we're going to go with this particular structure that we'd like all of our kids to use this particular vocabulary, or whatever it is, K through sixth, that will require some professional development. At the secondary level, professional development on creating our assessments and common assessments, and what a good assessment is, performance-based assessments, we're gonna need some professional development on that. And then, for the entire district, comes the multi-tiered system of supports. We are, I have the posting ready, we have a grant that's going to help us get started with that, with a professional learning community, which will, there will be representatives from teachers, both general education, special education, support, a guidance counselor, a social worker, so that that group of people, we're thinking seventeen plus administration from every building, become the first people to get some of this professional development, so that they can get an idea of what we're talking about, because it's not just a, well, you know, do this, and everything will be good, it's, it encompasses both academics and non-academic interventions. So you hear positive behavior intervention supports, that's part of MTSS. So those are going to require, we're gonna use some grant funding for the remainder of this year to get that one cadre of educators, some rounded professional development, but when we are unrolling things out, we're gonna need to have professional development interventions. So those are our biggest areas. We've had some, I know that there's always a need for some further Eureka training, professional development, because everyone gets, you know, the initial, K through A, we've done that, now we can, you know, do some more things in depth with that, and...
Can I go to that?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, when we had, when we had the...
Or your parent made Eureka Math.
When we had them here, you know, for that day, it was great, I was, I really enjoyed hearing some of that, so, yeah, I mean, school committee certainly can help us do.
And the initial decision was helpful too, when we made the, when the committee made the decision to go with Eureka Math, there was a presentation that was very helpful as well, yeah. But a great math curriculum, like.
Yeah.
I have two questions, and one is, is, I've been doing some research over the last couple of months about a particular position that, because of the focus of professional development and how it's far more encompassing than just what the public may actually think professional development is, there's been positions that have been created, professional development directors and coordinators, is one there yet where we would start looking at a coordinator, or is our money best spent just specifically focusing on behalf of themselves, professional development themselves?
I don't think we need a coordinator, because everything that we're doing is part of our multi-year plan, it's all, all connected, it's all connected to the school improvement plans, it's just a matter of making it happen, and you make it happen by getting some experts in here, working with groups of people, and that just costs, it takes time, really, you know, and...
I think it'd be different if we didn't know what the needs were.
Yes.
And to find those, we don't, but I think we've...
Maybe the facilitator.
Yeah, we're researching, you know, who's, who would be the best person to actually work with these seventeen educators in this PLC, or it'll be more than that, because there will be administrators involved as well. But, you know, who, who should we bring in, what does that look like? And that actually is a conversation that we need to have with the providers. There are some things that we can do ourselves, there are folks in the district who have some of this experience, which will help us move a little bit more quickly, but I don't think we really need to have a specific job type.
I think school pretty is investment, common planning time, and the opportunities for, for collaboration is money well spent, that's where it really seems to formalize itself, because you can go to PD, but if you don't carry it over, and having an opportunity to collaborate and carry it over is what really makes the difference.
And that's investment, I mean, it's an investment, investment in the process itself, and the people who are invested in teaching are invested in the process, and they're all about this.
Yes, and they need to, and they'll take these things back to those kinds of collaborative groups, and that's how you learn, and that's how you grow, just the same as a kid, you know, you, well, go try this, and it may not go well, and, okay, I tried it, this is what happened, so what do we need to do, you know, that's how things evolve.
It opens that dialogue.
Yeah, exactly, and that's what's most important, I think, it's, one and done is not the way to do professional development anymore, and all of these are connected to what we're actually doing, and what they're talking about in those, in that common planning time. These are definitely needs that, that, that we have. It's interesting that you mentioned the common planning time too, because there's a sense that, you know, we would do our professional development days, we would actually allow teachers to have that kind of time, and we're actually looking at, well, now that they have that time, and there's some things happening in those, in those collaborative meetings, it might allow us to use our in-service day a little differently now, so.
All right, then, item number four, the new regulation, Mass. General Law, I believe, is chapter forty-one, section fifty-four and fifty-five, for approval of bills and warrants, I think this is going to be very helpful for our director of business.
Yeah, well, more, more for Katie, I'm sure.
For Katie.
Katie's the one who's possibly getting signed, that's a good challenge, when people are, you know, working, busy, or away, weird challenge.
Correct. So essentially, do you want to tell them the law?
Essentially, the law, which was part of the Massachusetts, like, organization bill, which passed, affected like, November seventh.
November seventh.
November seventh, is now a committee can, is allowed to designate one member of the committee to sign the warrants on behalf of the whole committee, and, but as part of that, it's supposed to, the next meeting, we have the, the warrant available for review by all members, because they're willing to sign it, so that's what this is about. Speaking of the review part, I was just thinking, I haven't mentioned anybody yet, but, I don't know, because we do actually make copies of, of the warrant for our own records, I don't know if we can scan a copy, we can have Katie scan it, and then put it on the drive, so we can review it on the drive, if that question, versus me bringing a stack of warrants and bills here for you to look at, so we can have her post it on the...
You scan all the bills?
The only problem is it's a very large file, so...
It is, I don't know if we're going.
You'd have to scan it in separate documents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, we talked about this briefly, and I think what I've seen in the past, and what Ms. Donnie has as well, is a copy of the warrant is brought to this meeting, and you can review it, you know, pass it along, just take a look at it, flip through it, all that, but it doesn't require any signature for it, that part of it.
There can be no warrant.
Yeah.
People want to look through the questions, you know. And the warrant would still be available for anybody, you know, at the office in the town.
Yeah, you don't have to have just one person sign it, I know. I won't commit to sign it if I wanted.
And the other part is, you can't, because I've been at some meetings, this has been discussed quite a bit in my association, and you cannot designate a second person to be the one person to sign it, this question's come up in my understanding. So either one, that one person in the meeting designated signs it, or the majority have to sign it, can't be a second, one signature person. So if they're not available.
So in the event, right, if they're not available, then you.
The four members, at least four members would have to sign it. Question has come up, but there can be two sole signature people, but there's not, in my understanding, it's just one person.
Right.
Does no, in the alternate, really?
No, not like there is a payroll.
No, it can't be an alternate, no.
No alternate.
It can't be any, that question has come up quite a bit. I think a lot more, because I sent an email to get some language there, I think a lot of people are, a lot of communities are looking at this, and some won't do it, but I think it's a flavor, I get it, quite a few school committees have been doing this. You know, it's just out of, one chance here, I think.
So I would entertain a motion to enact the new regulation law, chapter forty-one, fifty-four, fifty-five, regarding one signature for approval of bills and warrants for a board or committee with a report to the full committee at the next meeting. The school committee chair will be the designated single signature for warrants and payroll.
That second amendment.
Were we done talking about that?
Well, the motion, and then we'll have additional discussion.
It's moved and seconded, now it's a discussion.
Moved and seconded, so any additional discussion?
Okay.
So now we can discuss.
So we, would we, so the chairman would be the person who would sign it?
Correct.
And if he's unavailable, then you still have to get.
Then you would revert back to.
We already know one person's unavailable. Okay.
It can still be sent electronically too, so.
Yeah. It can still be sent out electronically, what Katie already sends out, that will still be sent out.
It will, it'll still be sent out, but it would only require one signature, and then a review at the next school committee meeting, but in the event that.
Are we being asked to vote on this tonight?
Yes.
So if there's a question after the, I know, if there's a question after the initial signing, then it's, you know, brought up at the next meeting. It's too late, isn't it?
I think that kind of negates a check and balances of it, and I'm not sure that, I would need to ponder that for a while. And that's a big responsibility for the chairperson, too. Not only just in signing, but in taking responsibility by.
All of us have that responsibility now.
Yeah.
We would make it to one person, but I appreciate the idea that the two things points you brought out, that it is good for balance, that we all have a chance to, it forces us to review the warrants before we sign it.
Share accountability, not that we don't already, but, yeah.
Keeps us connected, kind of keeps us connected to this spending part of the, I find that being one of the most valuable responsibilities at the school board. But at the same time, I also appreciate the fact that Katie has to chase this sometimes.
Yeah.
Statistically, it can be difficult sometimes, but she sends it out, and she gets, you know, no response, and she sends it out again, she gets no response, that just creates challenges. We have to get, we're as timely as to getting this out, also the process and share.
Just in, just in, from my perspective, I'm not always sure what she's asking by the subject, or, and she sends the exact same email the second time. If she could put something like, I've sent this out and gotten no response, it's the exact same email, so sometimes I don't even know that it's the second one, or that.
Yeah, I think you can do with Clara, who's already signed, because sometimes she's got to do this.
For someone who gets literally two hundred emails a day, that's one in a, and I, and I in no way mean that to make her job harder, absolutely, as someone who has to do that in my job on a daily basis, but also as someone who checks three email accounts already, four really, that's one email in literally two hundred in a day, and I feel bad when I don't get it, but I don't necessarily know that the second one is the second one either.
Yeah, I think she, I'll talk to her, but she'd be a little clearer.
And I am probably the worst offender, so she'll probably say that.
No, I think she has to like, because sometimes people don't know they've already, some people think I signed it, but they really may have signed the previous one.
Right.
Now realize it.
I mean, it's literally like, here's a warrant for your review, there's one on the counter, not, you know, there's no.
I want to be very clear about this.
Be clear on that.
If we, I second the motion in favor of this, because the logistics issue with Katie, we've all caused that.
Mm-hmm, right.
Agreed?
Right, yeah.
Because originally, before many of you new members were on board, we all went to the building and signed that. So maybe this solution is, is to bring it back in-house and say, have every member return to that building and sign it in person the way we did.
I can't.
Then I won't have a big.
Well, this is my point.
I blame it on the women.
If, if, no, 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 I'm not blaming anything, I'm trying to make a statement that if you don't want a signal, single signature, there can be no more delays. We have to be good.
We have to be diligent.
We have to be diligent, we have to be responsible, because the process is acclimated to allow us to do this digitally. If we're not going to do it digitally, then we either go back to the way we did it, or we have one person do it.
Can I, can I add a point of clarification too? One is, you're already reviewing what you're receiving, we're not, that process isn't changing. Your ability to raise a question on something isn't changing. The timing in which we submit the warrant to the town isn't going to change with this process. All it is, is one physical person is signing the official warrant. And again, what I said earlier is, just because you're designating somebody, doesn't mean you can't sign the two. You can sign the two. So you're not changing anything, but.
It doesn't mean anything, though.
Okay. No, I think, Erica, you may be thinking that Ann Marie will go in and sign the warrant, and then at the next meeting, we'll have a chance to review it.
That's what it sounded like. That's what I heard.
No, which is obligated to present.
They still intend to send the warrant out as routine to everyone, and you have the opportunity to look at it. But you will know that your obligation is only in the event that you find something that you're uncomfortable with, that you'd like to make a comment to, and then you respond to it. Otherwise, you know that Ann Marie is going to go in and sign that particular warrant.
And has it ever been signed when we discussed it?
It would have been signed prior to the date it's required.
Yeah, but the timelines don't change.
The timelines don't change, it is now, and, you know, we.
This is meant to.
So we discussed it, sorry, it's signed. No, we're not, there's no discussion on it.
But now, if we're not signing it anyway, what's the difference? I mean, realistically.
You have to review it, you have to, you have to review it.
PD could send it out on.
That process isn't going to change.
Right, so she could send it out on Tuesday, and Ann Marie could sign it on Tuesday, and it's delivered.
No. The point is, the town doesn't, all of a sudden write checks faster because she got it done on Tuesday.
Right.
That timeline doesn't change.
So she's not technically delivering it, but she could for all intents and purposes.
Here's the point, we've been at risk of not having vendors be paid, because we didn't get all our signatures.
Okay, so we, we have to be clear on that, I think, too.
Well, that's, that's part of it. The other part is, this is meant to ease the process of school committee to try to, again, become functional in this regard. It doesn't negate your authority, it doesn't negate your ability to question things, it doesn't negate your suspicions, your conspiracies, whatever you want to try to put a negative spin on this, it doesn't do any of that, it doesn't take any of that away. All it's meant to do is streamline the process, that's why the law was passed, and it's to make sure that things are paid within the function of which they're timed, that's all.
Well, I don't know if we have to put it down negatively, conspiracy theories, no return, I think.
Just because we're having a conversation about it, doesn't rather have one less obligation that I have to show up in person, and I can still review it online, and I can still communicate. But I mean, I have a question, if we have something that is concerning, do we violate any open meeting laws by discussing?
Emailing all of you, yes, but you can email myself or Ed directly, and say, I have a question about, you know.
That's why it's always been, you just wanted to regulate.
Yeah. So, in terms of adopting that type of plan, so giving the, giving the feedback, if there's a question about something, it's already been signed off on, but it hasn't been, it hasn't been submitted, because it's always submitted on Monday afternoon?
By noon.
Yeah, I think you submit, yeah, Monday, I believe they print the checks on Wednesday, and generally mail the checks out on Friday. So that's pretty much the process.
So if there's a, if there happens to be a question, and that, there hasn't been, but if it happens, they're not, I don't know, if there happens to be a question, as long as that question is in, and it's been addressed to, like, say I have a question, and I, I've got questions.
You had a question of the day, a couple of questions.
I did.
Which is okay, which is fine.
Because I answered my job seriously.
Which is good, you give a question, we'll answer it. Fortunately, I don't think there's ever been, since I've been here, that we've ever had an issue with a check we had to void or, or stop payment on because it was an issue with a check, thankfully.
So, like, if my question to you was, well, I sent it to the two of you, so my question, if it was something that was really questioning a payment of something, and it was already signed, you would stop that from that warrant? If it was close to Monday afternoon?
It can be stopped, or a check can be pulled, if they've already printed it, hell, then they pull, I mean, pull it, not mail it out. They can pull a check. Sometimes, Town Hall have a question on, on bidding on, or there could be a check for some service, and they want us, they want us to send them the backup to the bidding, which we have to do, or off the state contract. So they'll hold the check, say, all right, we're going to hold this check until you give us the backup, and when we send them the backup, they mail the check. So the Town Hall, you know, if we ask them to hold the check or pull the check, they'll obviously do that.
Can I recommend that we discuss this next month, to see if we got better about signing on time, look at that, look at a piece of assessment, and discuss again and bring it back to the motion board?
Well, the motion's in place, so we do have to vote on the motion.
Unless they're, the person who made the motion, unless it's rescinded, but, you know, I think.
Is there a rhyme or reason to when they get sent out?
Oh, there's a process, it's, yeah.
No, I mean, like, are they every Thursday that she sends out?
Yeah, generally, she does warrants on Thursdays.
And she wants it Monday morning by noon?
Monday morning, then we have to.
Four people.
We have to bring, we have to bring everything over to Town Hall, we have to bring the signed warrant, and all of, and all the, all of the bills, you know, the original invoices have to go to Town Hall, and the interim, she has to make copies of all the invoices for our records. And then, after that, on Wednesday, you know, they, you know, cut the checks, print the checks, and on Friday, they mail them out.
So maybe she feels better about what she was saying, maybe she.
Any of us could be clearer, because I know.
This is the second request in the subject area.
And no one has, you know, like.
Yeah, she's not.
I've only got, you know, two, because, I mean, you need four out of the seven of us, but we all work.
Right.
We're all, you know, and then to get it, you know, late, and they've come late on Thursday.
Yeah, they could, because she's trying to.
So then you have Friday, and then it's the weekend, and you're hit with it on Monday.
Katie's very.
And I'm usually on Monday morning, or.
She's very efficient, but she's not very assertive, and she's afraid to be assertive, you know, I wouldn't say afraid, but, yeah, so sometimes she goes to me.
Erica, sign this now.
Well, she's not going to send an email. Generally, I will, she'll ask me to help her, we'll say, we'll do, a lot of times, I'll try to, like, text people.
Stop me at the Halloween party, yeah.
Yeah, I don't need your cell phone, I can text you.
I know, well, they have the contact information. Take it, yeah.
No, that was something, somewhat related.
We did, we should, the central office needs to have all contact information.
I love it.
They need to have all contact information, which I don't think they do.
We can email and sign it.
All right, we'll give a little off, topic.
So, any more additional discussion, because we can take a vote, and if it's voted, you know, I mean, we need to vote on it, on the motion. So all those in favor of the motion, oh, wait, should I ask the motion to be rescinded?
I'm not willing to rescind.
Not willing to rescind?
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, which is the motion to enact the new law, should I reread it?
Yes.
Chapter forty-one, sections fifty-four, fifty-five, regarding one signature for approval of bills and warrants for a board or committee with a report to the full committee at the next meeting. The school committee chair will be the designated single signature for warrants and payroll. That was the motion. Yeah, I'm moving to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four, five, all those opposed? Nay, abstentions, none. So the motion passes, one, two, three, four, was five to two? Five to zero. Oh, I'm going to be my Chinese scratch.
I'm just trying something else.
Okay, our next agenda item is the mid-year workshop. I put a draft agenda.
Yep.
On the Google Drive, just so far from the feedback I've received from members. So if there is any additional agenda items, please let me know. Obviously, we have a little time to post. The meeting will be held on January twentieth, from noon to five, right here in the professional library at the high school.
Ms. Chair, we have, still have a couple of, I mean, executive session items, I was wondering if you could schedule an executive session during this time as well?
Okay. So each session from noon to one, then?
I think so, I'll go back to that.
Okay.
I mean, the remaining, that's, that's not true of most of that time. With what? With the current budget, I mean, the current agenda, unless I have a true proportion, doesn't remain four hours? Oh, the remaining, yeah, the remaining agenda, yeah. Can I respectfully ask about the board visual budget?
So I'm going to go through briefly.
Oh, sorry.
So self-reflection sharing. I also put a folder on the Google Drive that has some questions on it relative to that particular line, item, agenda item, and I think if the administration that's there as well would like to take a look at those questions and relate it to themselves, they could as well, they could do that as well. So, those questions are in a document.
It's in that document.
I think it's reflection questions, it's on, it's in another folder for mid-year workshop.
We'll check that.
Okay. And then PR for the new school transition team, and how that's all going to come into play. Board visual budget, I just think is for general information. We had discussed it previously, I don't think everyone's aware that there is a website, and.
Do you have someone to present that, because I don't have to do so.
Sure. Just right, just briefly, you know, the value of this budget, where it is, and as it relates, it's really a great, great tool that the town has put out. An update on your superintendent's evaluation, your progress towards goal, but also, Chris had suggested, you know, the timeline for completing the evaluation as well, I think there should be a discussion surrounding that. And then, just a review of where we're at, the district improvement, district improvement plan and the value of it, again, I think for the school committee, being a young committee, you know, it's important to touch bases again with our district improvement plan, that's really our map and drives our vision and mission, and of course, the school improvement plans also come into play with that. Budget sources, this one in particular, I'm looking at, you know, not, the budget process and the timeline, but also where we draw our monies from, I think, you know, whether it's foundation, a little more in-depth with how those come into play with our budget, and what percentage of the budget, you know, we get, we get our monies from.
Do you want a discussion of grants at that point?
We can, grants would be great as well, and how that affects, you know, our budget and the budget process. And then, this was something, you know, the district acronyms, if we can brainstorm, maybe Susan and I, we can sit down and brainstorm all the, really, the ones that are most commonly used amongst the district of having.
You take like three letters of the alphabet. You do the As.
And just, you know, some of that, that common language, and I think it's helpful maybe to even have, you know, a globe or some kind of, a visual on the website.
We have something at HUI that's called HUI Alphabet Soup, I mean, that's what somebody did, they went and wrote down, like, the top two hundred, because every science.
Oh, I'm sure, there's, right.
Every institution and every program known to anything science has, and some of them share the same acronym, and so, you know, and they just put down, you know.
But just as a reference.
Put them online, so people could reference them, or, you know, highlight the ones that they've heard, and go look them, you know, go look them up, so it is a good resource.
Right. So any, any other.
It's funny when we cross, but they don't mean the same thing, because that happens sometimes.
Sometimes you just make up.
Well, I like making them up.
I especially like the AGP.
But in the next foreseeable week or so, if you, what, additional?
Oh, and HUI stands for road to...
Photographing. So just let me know. And I'll send out, you know, this is in draft form, so we'll fine-tune it. And then I'll also send out the reminder about the reflection questions as well. And I'll also send out a menu. So we'll get that done ahead of time.
Important stuff.
I'll send out a menu, get that done ahead of time and bring...
Susan, you mentioned lunch or dinner. What was the one that you were going to be...
That was for AA.
Any additional future agenda items? I'm looking at the calendar draft, February, we'll be ready for that.
Yes, yep.
The NIAS report, I'm not sure how the summary, when that timeline was, I knew it was relatively close to February, that she had mentioned that we most...
Principal Sutton was in touch with the chair today, he's not done yet, but it's, we're gonna call it...
It's close, okay, so possibly. And obviously, the budget's ongoing, MSBA is also ongoing.
I wish they had a better report than that.
Do we look at...
There appears that there'll be a need to adjust this year's school calendar with our June fifth in-service day, because it's a date specific for biology MCAS testing at Born High School. So we can no longer use it as an in-service day, so we may need to adjust that, where it lands, not sure yet. We were going to wait a little bit longer before, see how the winter weather is with dates. But right now, I just want to give you a heads up that that date will need to be changed, because of that.
So...
So, school year...
So that's that school year sixteen calendar, but that's probably not gonna happen.
It's actually school year seventeen, it should say school year eighteen calendar.
School year eighteen.
Yeah, so school year seventeen.
I think that gets rid of like a whole year, I mean, so...
I know, it's sixteen slash seventeen, seventeen slash...
Right?
Yeah.
Time flies.
It does. Any other additional school choice numbers, do we usually discuss?
School choice is April. We should take a vote, write a vote, right after the budget presentation.
So we'll mark that for April. We'll also... All those already on the agenda, okay. Facilities, should be an ongoing update with facilities, some standard. Anything else we can put up?
Do you have a question, question hearing?
March, it's March.
We should put that down.
And just as a reminder, for those folks who are due on the hearing, the hearing is a specific time. So regardless of how our meeting flows, we set a time for the hearing and that's when we begin the budget hearing.
We stop our public session and move into the public hearing. And then go back to public session. Like, did change motion adjourn?
Second. Sorry, the date of when it's, um, meeting, the thing?
Well, the January twentieth is our...
I know that, but I'm talking about February, right?
Oh, the first Wednesday of...
It's February first.
February first, I think it is. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, Erica?
Yes.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you guys, so...
Welcome, everyone. We moved into public session at five thirty to immediately enter into executive session. Executive session just adjourned, so we are back in open session. Is there any individuals who would like to come and speak during our public comment? The opportunity to come speak? Seeing none? Would everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chris, if you can read this, or the vision and mission, please?
School community, born school community vision, we are committed, excuse me, we are committed to fostering a community where each and every student of born public schools, students graduate with the knowledge, habits and skills to collaborate effectively as our diverse society evolves. The town of Born continually empowers students and staff to achieve personal goals and demonstrate lifelong learning. The mission of the born public schools is, the born public schools is committed to connecting individuals to their growth potential, engaging the community in ways to facilitate student achievement, guaranteeing a relevant, viable curriculum for students and assuring universal accountability that supports the maximum academic potential and civic success for all students.
Thank you. Are there any individuals in the audience who are using any type of recording devices? Other than cable? And we are not live this evening, some issues with voice, but we appreciate you being here and taping, it'll be played at a later date. Announcements and correspondence?
Yes, I have one announcement. The announcement, I guess it wasn't enough of an experience this fall to say or to change someone's opinion about joining and being appointed to the commission for NIAS. We have a principal in our district who is now becoming a formal member to fill the principal's vacancy on the commission at NIAS to review other reviews of schools and offer recommendations and accommodations for those schools. So Principal Amy Sutton will be attending a training, intensive training, January twenty-seventh to the third, and she is now an official member of a NIAS commission, so I just wanted to make sure.
Which she has done in the past, correct?
Yeah.
No, 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 this is actually their commission, this is not a review, this is not going to a school district and being on a review team. She's actually working with NIAS, because I mean, to review what review teams write, to offer feedback on this.
Wow, fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, I think that will benefit us as a public space.
That's great.
That's one announcement I have.
Any other announcements?
Yes, I would like to announce that we are going to be showing Screenagers. It's a documentary, an hour and ten minutes long. We're gonna be showing it on February second in the Born High School auditorium at six thirty. It's open to the public. And it is the, a mother who happens to be a physician started, her daughter needed a new cellphone. So they went shopping for the cellphone, and then, why do you need a smartphone? And things kind of went from that point where the mother started exploring how much screen time kids have, how their habits with phones, iPads, how they're being influenced by that. It spills over into the schools and interesting findings about one-to-one programs that she did some research on. I think there's a lot for all of us to learn, because as comes out in the film, the, our kids are actually watching what we do. And we all, I believe, can benefit from watching this film and learning about how we can make, help our kids and ourselves to really be interactive with people and not just screens. So again, it's going to be February second at six thirty here in the Born High School auditorium. After we show the film, there will be an opportunity for discussion. I'd like to facilitate a general discussion if people have any comments, concerns, questions. I mean, we won't be able to answer everything probably, but I believe this is a very timely, timely event. And I think that we, I know when I watched it, it was very enlightening, especially to see what happens in the household and how that spills over into the school and actually in all parts of our communities. So Screenagers on February second.
Is it for all ages?
It's, I think that, I believe, middle school, high school and up would probably be more beneficial for. But I believe that parents and adults will get a lot out of it, not that students wouldn't. Because there's a lot about working together to figure out how you're going to use your devices, you know, when you're going to use your devices, what does that look like? A lot of thought put into using smartphones and using iPads and computer time and all of that kind of thing. So I would say middle school, high school, definitely grown-ups.
Common Sense Media dot com recommends great, ages ten and up.
How are we promoting this, or how is it?
I just actually started, I'm going to be putting it in the newspaper, I have a press release on this. This is kind of the press release, because they gave me these that I can use. And then it will go out in our e-news from all the, from our building, also probably on the school pages, so that we will be... And then I can make flyers, and this is what I thought I would do. And get it out in the library, take it over to the Jonathan Born Library.
And you said you sent it to the paper?
And I will, I haven't done it yet, this was my first big announcement, but yes, I would be sending it to the paper.
Well, it's February, right?
Yes, it's February second.
So that's a wow.
Yeah, but I wanted to get, you know, get it announced here, I thought this would be a good place to just start the advertising for this event. It'll get a lot of people.
And we could hold eight hundred and forty people in our forum? Eight hundred and forty-two people in our forum, so we can have quite the crowd.
So if you think we're gonna get that, should we do an Eventbrite or something like, I'm sorry, I keep saying wait. Should there be an Eventbrite or something like that, that would, I wouldn't want people to be turned away at the door?
I have a link to...
If there's a sense, if, have other communities done it and they feel about, you know, so if there's a sense of that?
They sent me a link to a, something like an Eventbrite, and it's, so far I haven't gotten a lot of assistance with how that works. So I'm still working on that piece, because there are some school districts and some entities who actually charge admission, and we're not doing that.
No, it's, yeah, we can, we can try, that would be helpful in another, you use them at the Ocean Graphic for our public events. It just helps keep our expectations...
So you know how many people are going.
So you know, and then people don't come and are disappointed, you don't want anybody leaving, sense of, you know, that kind of sense.
So maybe I can run by you the link that they gave me, maybe you know something about it?
Yeah, oh, I can try. I can try. So that's great, yeah.
I also just want to say that our engineering day is happening next Friday, and there's some really neat things happening in all of our schools, and we're very different this year, so, so we're excited about that.
This, next Friday?
The thirteenth.
Oh, thirteen, I'm connected, I'm sure.
Yeah, January thirteenth.
Any other announcements?
Yeah, I'd like to make an announcement, I'd like to record a recognition, I know we've talked, I think I talked to a meeting last night, but about Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Les Wiggins here, tonight he's joined us, he retired us officially last Friday, this was officially last day, but he's on vacation for quite a while. Doesn't seem like he wants to come back.
Thought that's why he's here.
So I just want to recognize, you know, Les is obviously a long-term, he had thirty-eight years in district, you know, worked in the maintenance department, you know, I agree, misses him already, did a great job, just his, you know, his demeanor and his legal style and his MacGyver-like skills to fix things. To say, now the motors, he, I know he spliced the wires together with his motors and saved us a lot of money. So he was a great loss, but, you know, we're all happy families, enjoying his retirement so far. I think, and I think Mr. Hilberg had a small presentation about to make too.
You wanna come up, Chris?
Yeah.
That's nice to tell you. I've been on facilities sub for six years now, or maybe longer to us, it was just working with him, he was amazing. MacGyver with a straight demeanor, I mean, he always was very calm, but knew everything about every school everywhere. So just don't go far. So we do have a small note for you, but I just wanted to say thank you, and this is the schools, and if you look far, you can see Borndale. But I will tell you, I, we made a mistake, I made a mistake on the plaque, it says thirty-nine years. There's two solutions, I can get you a new plaque or you can go back to work for a year.
It was thirty-eight plus. Thirty-eight plus thirty, so we'll stretch it to thirty-nine. But I just wanted to say thank you. It was more than thirty-eight, yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Les.
Really, thank you. Thank you.
How you doing?
You are discussing.
Okay, thanks a lot, it was quite thirty-eight years. Really long.
Does he need a bubble wrap?
Let's see around.
Oh, yes. That was bubble wrap, which is for me, you just don't have my truck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Enjoy, enjoy. Any other additional announcements? Okay, on to agenda item number two, Audrey, welcome and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Hello, everyone. Hello. So the boys' ice hockey team is raising money this week for the families of Owen Higgins and James Lavitt, as we probably all know what happened. They were found with athletes that recently passed away, and the team has already raised over three hundred dollars for them, so that's pretty great. And rehearsals for Born Drama Club's productions of Barry Child and Grease are well underway, happening right now. And the winter sports season is also in full swing, and the boys' basketball team is undefeated so far in their conference, which is pretty impressive, and they're playing right now, I think. There's a robotics club competition coming up, and the team will be traveling to Lexington next week to compete. And three born seniors will be traveling to Sharon for the Southeast District Music Festival this weekend. It includes two singers, Abby Seba and Merrick Rubenstein, and a French horn player, Ross Trup.
Any questions for Audrey? Thank you, Audrey. Enjoy the weekend. All right. Moving on to agenda item number three, transportation contract.
Yeah, I'll speak to that, yeah, and invite Mr. Hilberg to come up to the podium while we're in the collaborative. I'll give a little history of the transportation districts, and a lot of people are new in the committee. We're in the fifth year of a five-year contract with our students. So there's been a lot of changes in transportation, especially across the Cape in the last number of years, where there's generally been very few bidders on transportation. And a lot of districts are getting very high increases, you know, in the recent biz, last couple of years, like twenty, thirty percent increases, you know, from what they're... So we were concerned about that. We had a lot of meetings at the collaborative, the business managers all get together, probably the last year and a half, two years, it was a group, we've been talking about options of what we could do. And one thing we looked at, and we talked about, the collaborative does transportation for Mashpee Public Schools, their regular transportation, you know, daily basis. So we thought of maybe they could do things for Born, so we had a lot of discussion with them. We also wanted to go out the bid to see what was out there. So we simultaneously, as we were talking to collaborative about options with them, we don't do bid with the collaborative, because we're part of the collaborative, there's no bidding process required.
We are the collaborative.
We are the collaborative.
I'm trying to work with you on that.
We are the collaborative, so there's no bidding requirement for the collaborative. So what we did, we did go out the bid, and we had a bid opening a few weeks ago. So I gave you a comparison of where we would be if we went with additional, we had two bidders, the first student our current vendor bid, and Cape Destinations is a known, you know, commodity on the Cape, they also bid, they were the low bidder of the two bids we did receive. So we did, you know, consider those, but we're working with the collaboratives, the collaborative functions a little bit is different, because we are part of the collaborative, are the collaborative. So in this case, if we commit with the collaborative...
A little more practice.
Yeah, in this case, what the structure of the deal would be, is they, well, they already opened up the bid, they've already done some bidding, you know, on the buses. So with the collaborative, we would be getting, you know, twenty-three brand-new buses, you know, we would be starting with brand-new buses, where on the bid, we would be getting, we only required like the year 2012 a new bus, we didn't require a bus, so the rates would have been a lot higher from a third party. And also, we're committing, the district's committing through this to buy the buses, you know, pay the lease, they leased the buses over a seven-year period, and we're, you know, the district's committing to that seven-year lease. So if any, anytime we wanted to leave the collaborative on transportation, we would still have to pay for the buses, that's, we want to be clear on that. So other things, it was pretty much run, we've met people with Mashpee, you know, their experience, they're very positive, their experience with the collaborative, it's pretty much run as our own little entity, you know, pretty much an Excel spreadsheet where all the costs are allocated, you know, for the driver... Collaborative numbers are estimated because we're not going to have the firm numbers until they purchase the buses and then they lease the buses, which will probably be a few months from now. So we, we estimate, we conserve estimates on the, on the cost. So if you look at that spreadsheet, I-
On the file?
In the file, it would say-
What's the title of it?
It say Transportation Now Cost Analysis?
Yeah. That's why I think busting analysis.
I just want to just pass on.
I have a lot of busting analysis.
Okay, just in case. So our current contract, so I did the analysis based on our traditional service we get. We have, we have nine buses that are on a, a three-tier system, we have nine buses that run on a two-tier system. Plus we also have late buses for the middle school, you know, ninety days a year. Plus we have transportation for our field trips and for athletic trips. So we have those costs. So I did the comparison, you know, apples to apples in all these different years. So with this current year, it's going to be, the total cost should be about $1,065,000 for FY seventeen with our current vendor. Cape Destinations, based on their bid, our cost for FY eighteen would be $1.328 million. Yeah, an increase of about twenty-five percent from where we are now. And then the collaborative, the estimate would be a cost of like one million, about 1.2 million. Cost, an increase of about twelve percent from where we are now, where we are this year. Which, which is actually, I think, is very good compared to what other districts, they 've noticed had a thirty percent increase a couple of years ago, said to absorb, you know, and they found the big increase a couple of years ago. So other districts are looking at this, I've just been talking to my colleagues, I think we're one of the, we'll be the second, you know, on the Cape, we'll be the second one on the Cape, all right? We do Mashpee in the regular rate?
Mashpee, Turo.
Oh, you do Turo times, I do do it in Tucker, okay. So we'll be the fourth one to, to join, the collaborative do our regular rate transportation. Sort of thing. So the first year savings projections, you know, so project, be about $133,000, the savings using the collaborative versus we went with the other Cape Destinations. That's what I have, I need, Paul Frank will speak.
I'm finding it's a quiet.
Yeah, I don't know what other questions might have.
Do you, in terms of the bus drivers, I know that there was some topic in the thing on facilities, maybe on budget, we've been one of those. We were talking about the bus drivers sometimes going, you know, from one company to the other company. But do you already have a whole slew of bus drivers or is that something?
With, with bus drivers working in the district, the families have relationships with them, the students have relationships. And I've worked closely with First Student and other vendors in this life and other places that I've been. Drivers tend to stay where they're working and as long as they're treated fairly, they'll go from one place to the next. So I think often we'll see ninety, ninety-five percent of the drivers, as long as they're being, being treated fairly, going from one place to the next. As the collaborative, you're our stockholders. Our goal is to pass any savings on to you and then we share any liability. So we gain the flexibility and all we're looking for is offering fairness to the employees and making sure that the service is quality. Because you're talking about building the school, as you're talking about some changes in service, which is changing, and talked about a spreadsheet, which is changing the spreadsheet. We'll determine what the service is going to be and what the level of service is going to be together, but we'll deploy them based on what the needs of the district are. Because we're not trying to get, we're not trying to pay somebody as a stockholder, we're trying to make sure the savings gets back to you. The nice part is you get on to your six, seven and eight, you start to see increases aren't just two and three percent, they start to be one and two percent, even with some of the factors like the Affordable Care Act and mandatory sick time, which are really driving up the cost of the vendors. I don't think, because people aren't making money hand over fist to transportation. These factors, they haven't accounted for before. The collaborative has, operating as an entity that's an extension of the school district, we've accounted for these over time. And that was becoming a period where, so it's work. It's work on behalf of the district, it's work on behalf of the collaborative, but you gain, you gain some savings and you gain some flexibility by operating as an extension of yourself.
Drivers, we've talked about the drivers, we feel we have a lot of great drivers, you know, in the district now. And hopefully, you know, they will, you know, follow, you know, save the district and, you know, go with the collaborative. At some point, the collaborative will be, you know, advertising, you know, the opportunities probably a little early now, but some, probably next couple of months, whatever. So our hope is, you know, the drivers will join the colla-, you know, work for the collaborative.
So will their rate of pay stay the same?
It'll be the same, this is prevailing wage. These are prevailing wage jobs. So I don't know exactly, I mean, the wages, I, the twenty-one, twenty-two dollars an hour, I don't think it's that, it's in that range, is what they're paying, in that range.
What we've found commonly is the collaborative's probably a little bit higher than the, the drivers in Bourne at this point in time. But there are bits and pieces that fit together easily and don't fit together easily. Collaborative drivers, you don't try to contain their hours, their hours are what their hours are. And we co-pay benefits, much the same as the school district, in a percentage. So there are certain benefits that are in addition and certain commitments that drivers need to make.
What have they do with the union? Or do we do with the union?
I believe it's currently a union in place, but I might sound like a union expert. I mean, the agreement is with First Student, so I know there is a union in place.
Just you know, the district, we've been through this once already, five years ago, we changed from one vendor to another and we tried to pull, hang on to as many drivers as we possibly could because Bourne is unique with the two bridges and traffic flow and all of that. So I think we're going to have a similar experience and/or we would have had a similar experience if we went with the lowest bidder too. We would have had to have changed and tried to maintain as many bus drivers as possible as well. But the collaborative is us, we are the collaborative, so we are going to maintain as many people as we possibly can in Bourne. Because I agree with Mr. Hilton, that they have such a local connection that they, we want them.
Right. So we had a very, I felt like we had a very rocky bus start to the year, this year a lot of, not miscommunication, but just like the scheduling and late arrivals and lots of changing and how by whatever. Yeah. Is there any, you know, is there anything other that you could add to that that might, you know, mitigate some of those things?
I would say the more consistency you have in your drivers, the better off you're going to be. Kindergarten starts are always difficult just because you're operating with families and students that are new to transportation. The one thing you can guarantee in transportation is there will be bumps and it's how you respond to those bumps that happen. There will be buses that are late, there are going to be routes that have to be fixed. But the more people work together, the better off it's going to be. And if we have drivers and, and staff that work together, I don't see those, that being a significant challenge as long as we can deploy people correctly.
And we also have a bus working-
Yeah, I would recognize, yeah.
Using the district, Sue Alma.
Sue Downing. Sue Downing, who's been here like, I think, sixteen years. So Sue will still be here, so she is sort of does the routes, you know, this, I'd say this year has been-
Contact with Sue a few times.
Yeah. I mean, this year's been better than last year. Last year, you know, with my experience, just like my tenth year doing this, was the worst year I ever seen in transportation. Last year was horrendous for student service and drivers and, you know. This year has been much better, I'm not saying it's been great, but I mean, I think it's much better than last year. I mean, we have, you know, like you're saying, consistency of drivers, you know, if they change drivers, you know, it creates confusion for everybody, just different driver three times over one week. So that's a problem. So we obviously like to have consistency of drivers, that's the key.
We gave Los an application.
But that's something that you try to work towards at the collaborative, the consistency of the drivers and the place to retain.
That's our goal at all. The more people working together, the better it is. If you have a core group of drivers, often, as I said, ninety percent of the drivers tend to like where they are. It's a struggle right now, it's, it used to be young moms drove and could drive with their children. What we're finding now is more retired men, which means that you're going to be rotating people over, they may drive for ten years where they used to drive for thirty years. It's just going to be a different cycle of training people. So it will always be retraining and working within the community to bring the right people on board.
But the moms can still drive with their kids?
Moms can still drive, as long as it's appropriate with the school system and everybody is working together. If there are things that don't work out, we certainly will address those.
Ed, I have one, I have one just question that I'm wondering, with the seven-year contract and a new school, and I'm pretty sure that we're going to have new start and stop times and reconfiguration, does that have any bearing on the configuration of how we're planning this, this, this budget and, and the amount of buses and the time allotment? And will that come into play at some point with any kind of like-
We could do additional buses, I mean, we're buying number of buses we have now. So we have, we, we operate, is how I would say the buses, twenty-three buses. There's, there's eighteen buses which we use on a daily basis with routes. We have three spares and we have two buses that are designated for field trips and sports trips. So that's, we have, just we have twenty-three buses.
And we might be more buses?
But if we made, if we had to get additional buses, we, we would, we would do that. We'll have, you know, once that decision's made, when the school opens, how are we going to do it, whether it's going to be still a three-tier, it's going to be a two-tier, all the decisions are-
But it's not going to be that we're going to need less buses and be-
No, if anything, we're going to need more buses.
I, I think what continues to get lost here is we are the collaborative. So we control all of it.
We control, true.
I think I might make a point about that too, is that we're operating off a spreadsheet, folks. That means the ultimate in transparency because it is us. And any modifications, any changes, we're operating off a spreadsheet, new buses and Sue Downing, we're good. Really, that's what it comes down to.
To answer your question, if you need two less buses, we sit down, we decide we're going to transfer ownership of two buses to a different district. Then we decided it drops off the spreadsheet, you don't have that cost anymore. In a contract with somebody that's working as a profit center, they're going to try to figure out how they can eliminate their loss. The benefit is yours, part of the liability is yours, that if we're buying two million dollars worth of equipment, if we have to dispose of it, we have to think of it together. And that, that's the biggest issue that we see here.
Does the, um, what come to the general fund or does it come to the educational model?
Out of the operating budget, is that your question?
The 133,000 is some, does that go to the general fund of the, um-
No, I was just showing you savings. No, it was just amount, no, I was just looking at the two, the two, then we, we would be char-, all the fun, all the, we would be invoiced by the collaborative for the actual cost. So that's budget, so we're lining up in the budget for, this year's budget for like 1.1 million for your transportation. So we pay it through the budget. I was just doing analysis of the first year savings, comparing the cost-
As projected saves.
Projected, right.
Right, so any savings or any, like in the future, if there is any plus, does that come to the general funds or does it come to the school line item?
Oh, school.
It would be the school, right.
Yeah, not for the town, the school.
Are you saying returning it back to the general fund of the town, is that the question you're asking?
Is money going to the town, does it come to the-
No, they would just bill us, if we have any savings, let's just say, right now, we're, I think we're projecting a 250 a gallon for diesel fuel. If it turns out diesel fuel goes down to 220, there's some savings, we'll get a credit from the collaborative at the end of the year for the fuel credit.
Correct. But it's contained in our operating budget.
All within our budget.
So I can speak to, we have a consulting business manager who's trying to retire, Mr. Marsh and Mr. Donahue will sit with them and try to get us to reduce the factors.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
So, so it's not 133,000 dollars in savings, it's 150. That discussion will continue until the day the buses are ready, the buses hit the road and they get the actual value and then they get a series of invoices. And we'll continue to talk about what savings can be gained, what service provisions we need to change as time goes on. Going back to splitting the service as you build the new school, this allows you to switch in any manner you want to, down to two tiers, up to four tiers, you can do any number of things you choose to do. But the equipment's there, the labor's there and we're just going to decide how to deploy it together.
Paul, I have two quick questions before you leave. First off is a clerical question. In looking at the savings that I see, generally routine comparison, comparative analysis, I see extraordinary difference in the field trip athletic-
Yeah, I meant to bring that up actually, it's going to be great because, yeah, their cost-
Are the, are the students running along the bus?
Going for a tank, get on, rescue.
Yeah, it's going to be a great saving. We did talk, I, I want to point that out because the, the transit, yeah, the field trip athletic trips, the cost would be about half of what we're paying now, projected to pay. So we can, that's great for the, potentially be more field trips, you know, if you pay sponsors, a lot of those, cost your way down athletics, you can look at that, shifting that. You know, there's going to be some savings at the athletic revolving fund, which funds, the athletic transportation now is a revolving fund, so there'll be other funds available for other things in sports too, if we have less.
I think, I think to try to answer the question, there's a lot of, because we own the buses, there's a lot of maintenance built into the cost of this, so therefore it blows the cost, because we already own the buses, we're not paying extra for that bus to go to field trip. We're just paying direct time for the person to drive it.
But so essentially you're paying for twenty-three buses by running eighteen, so when you put that bus on the road, you're paying the labor cost and the maintenance against it.
It's the bus to turn it on, right?
It's just to turn it on or operate it.
Yep, and he goes, so the, the next question that I have is, are, do you guys have, if there's other buses that might serve us better on a routine, on a non-routine basis, like the Niagara stuff, Nature's Classroom or the New York trips or anything, do you guys have access to buses like that as well?
We have spare buses in other places and-
We traditionally don't use our busing company for those types of trips.
You're talking about coach buses and stuff?
Yeah, we don't have coach buses.
And then my last question then is, if more, more towns go on board, do you foresee a little more buying power, that kind of thing?
There'll be more buying power and, um, there could potentially be more savings, but it would be a responsibility for the superintendents and the business managers to really work together and work on the operational aspects of this because-
What savings?
What's it?
Pun is definitely intended, but in the end, the districts are driving the bus.
We've been with Mashpee a couple of times and I know they've had a very experienced,